And this session of the Atwater City Council for May 29th, 2018. If you please all rise for pledge to our flag followed by invocation by Chaplain McClellan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our fathers, we approach your throne tonight, we're so thankful that we can. We're also thankful for the fact, Lord, that you do hear our prayers and you do answer them. And Father, we have assembled ourselves here tonight, the mayor, the city council, to discuss the affairs of our city. Father, I'm asking you give in each and every one of them wisdom. Father, that you direct their paths, Lord, direct what they say. Father, just have your hand upon them. I do pray for our police tonight, Lord, that are patrolling. We ask, Lord, that you would protect them, build a hedge around them, get them home safely. We thank you for their service. We also thank you for their families. We do pray for our firemen that are on duty at this time. Lord, protect them as well, and we thank you for them and their families as well. But Father, we do pray tonight, we do seek your face tonight. We do need wisdom as we direct to the affairs of our city, and Father, we want to do that which is right. Father, be with us in this meeting, for we do ask it in Jesus' name, amen.
Roll call, please. Creighton?
Here.
Raymond?
Here.
Viera?
Here.
Mr. Vineyard is absent. Price?
Yep.
We have a quorum. Mayor or city attorney report out from closed session.
Ladies and gentlemen, there are no reportable items out of closed session this evening. Staff was given direction.
We had no subsequent need items that were brought to our attention, and so we moved to approval of agenda as posted or amended.
Okay, are there any amendments that any council member may have? Entain motion.
Motion to approve the agenda as posted.
A second. Call for question. Creighton?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Viera?
Yes.
Mr. Vineyard is absent. Price?
Yes.
Motion passes. Presentations. Merced County Mosquito Abatement District.
Yes, accompanied by Jason Bocken.
Okay.
Thank you for having us here. We are obviously with Merced County Mosquito Abatement District. Once again, my name is Paige Weller. I do all of the customer service as well as public relations with our district, and Jason Bocken was so kindly accompanying me tonight with his biology expertise. He is our environmental services supervisor. So, just a little bit of details about ourselves, nothing too interesting. Jason has blessed us with his presence at our district for a little over ten years now. I'm fairly new. I moved to the county a little over a year ago from Southern California, and I have to say this was the perfect job to be introduced to the county because you definitely get to understand all the different areas, street names, everything that makes Merced County Merced County. So, I'm actually an Atwater resident myself, so I'm very happy to be here tonight, and thank you for having us. Going into it, the purpose of Merced County Mosquito Abatement District is to provide the area wide mosquito control, prevent mosquito-borne disease, and reduce economic loss and discomfort from mosquitoes. So, I'm sure I have actually spoken to some of you on the phone myself, taking some service requests. I'm sure many of you are familiar with us, and we're very happy to have been serving the county since 1946. We actually became mosquito abatement a little bit before that. Started off with one man who covered the whole county, and now we are a district with twenty-one wonderful employees, some of which have been there for over thirty years, and everyone's been working very hard at this, especially this season, because like I'll mention tonight, we have some different programs we've implemented for the first time in 2018, and we're pretty proud to say that they have been successful so far. And just a little info, we're there Monday through Friday, six-thirty in the morning until three. We have a website where you can find information such as our spray notifications when we're flying, the aerial, doing aerial spraying, ground spraying. You can submit service requests on our website. Of course, you can always give us a call if you need to place a service request. We're more than happy to inspect the property and do treatment when necessary. And as well as we do have social media such as Facebook where we will share different events that we're attending, things like that. And that is our office building that we built in 2014, so it's pretty exciting, newer building. So, just some mosquito facts, it's a little cut off, I apologize, but different things that some people might not know, and Jason might be able to give you a little more information. Things such as only female mosquitoes are the ones that bite. Three hundred eggs can be laid at a time, which doesn't sound very comfortable. Mosquitoes do hibernate, they're cold-blooded, prefer temperatures over eighty degrees, so something that you might notice this week is that they will be coming out in times like dawn and dusk, and with the temperature change after this little bit of rain that we had, and you might be outside barbecuing and wondering why all these mosquitoes are coming out trying to go inside your homes, and it's because mosquitoes, once they sense temperature change after they've hatched, just try and get some shelter. So, these are all things that you can talk to us when you call in for a service request, and the technicians will be able to help out. And these are just some fun facts, and we always have information, like I said, on our website. And Jason can kind of go over the different stages of a mosquito cycle very quickly here.
Yeah, absolutely. Mosquito is an insect, it has four stages in its life cycle. They all start out as eggs. We have species that lay their eggs directly on the water, some lay their eggs in moist soil, wait for water to flood up over them, and some will even lay their eggs on the inside of an artificial container and wait for that water level to come up. Regardless of how they lay their eggs, the second stage is the larvae, that's an aquatic stage, they all live in water. Go back one more?
Oh, yes, sir.
They all live in water, but they all breathe air, so that siphon tube up at the top, that's how that larvae breathes, so it's kind of orientated with its head towards the bottom, it's breathing. Still has the main parts of an insect there, the abdomen, the head, the thorax. It's kind of an important stage for mosquito control, this is where we want to kill mosquitoes. They're concentrated, they're confined, they can't move outside of whatever body of water they're in, and they're not biting anybody, and they're not spreading disease. So, the more we can kill in the larval stage, absolutely benefits everyone. But no matter how well we do that, larval control can never be a hundred percent, you're going to have adults for some reason or another. So, the goal is attack the larva, that's the main goal. Go ahead. After the larval stage comes the pupa stage. This stage is when the mosquito is actually transforming into an adult. Bad thing about this stage is we have a lot of different materials that can control larva. Basically, only one material that controls pupa, that's oil. The pupa's not eating, so any material that needs to be ingested will not kill this stage. Any material that needs to be absorbed into the larva can't make it through that pupa casing, so once it gets to pupa, oil is our only way to control mosquitoes in the pupil stage. And there you see an adult mosquito hatching from its pupa casing, so at this point, we have a bigger problem.
And then you see this one, mosquito.
Yeah, there's your adult.
Oops, want me to go back?
No, that's fine. We can talk about sources right now. Merced County, we have a wide variety of mosquito breeding sources. Dairy lagoons, obviously, we all know we have a lot of dairy lagoons. The wetlands are a big problem for us in the fall, irrigated pastures, we have some rice in Merced County, roadside ditches. I would say all those sources are pretty straightforward for our technicians, they're easy to find, we know about most of them. Things like the neglected swimming pools and the other backyard sources are a real problem, those are hard to get to.
So, these are sources that, I'll let Jason take the reins, but we just implemented a program where we hired on a specific staff, I apologize, to go door-to-door in northern Merced, and Jason's been supervising it ever so kindly. And a lot of people are familiar with dairy lagoons and wetlands and all that being causes for mosquitoes, but we have some wonderful residents in the area who understand, oh, I need to keep my pool clean, I need to keep my pond treated, but they don't realize that as they're recycling and being good to the environment, it's collecting rainwater, and Jason recently has discovered larvae in the tiniest of bottles that was just left over on the side of their house, plant boxes, water features, so this is the program that he's been covering at the moment.
That picture on the left is a tote full of a guy's recyclables, and there was water in the tote, and we saw larvae in that right away, and as we were emptying that out, there's more and more water came out of there, and actually, the bottles themselves were filled up with water. There's literally breeding inside the bottles, inside the tote. The middle picture, some planters that had a alavira just growing in that water, loaded with mosquito larvae. The picture on the right is a fairly large water fountain, probably up to my, almost to my chest, half full of water, again, loaded with larvae. It's hard to see, but at the base of that fountain is rocks, and under those rocks is like a plastic mesh where that water flows into, then gets picked up by the pump and back into the fountain, and that was loaded with larvae too.
So, yeah.
These are, most of these are very nice, well-kept backyards, and people just don't think about the standing water like we're thinking about the standing water.
And all of the information on this eighties egypti mosquito that we have been doing the extra surveillance for, once again, is on our website. We have more detailed notes, I'm sure if you're just ever so interested, you can go look at that. And then, so what we've been doing, which is new for this year, which I don't know if some of you have heard of, we did hire aerial surveillance company to cover all of Merced County, to take aerial footage, and that way, they could then narrow down backyards that had questionable pools, neglected pools, it could have been a trampoline, they just had to make sure. So, our staff has been working pretty overtime. We received, we anticipated about two hundred or so neglected pools that we weren't aware of, and it ended up being a little over a thousand. So, we've been pretty busy, but it's bittersweet because then we're able to get in touch with people who, they have a neglected pool, but it might be because they are in a wheelchair, they are elderly, they can't afford to maintain their pool, and they don't realize the consequences of a neglected pool. So, we have, we sent out, we personally addressed all the letters, sent them out to the homeowners, and got in contact with them, and we're still in the process of getting in contact with everyone, and basically said, either the pool needs to be cleaned out for the, for public health, and obviously, no one wants mosquitoes around, who does? But either that, or if it will have standing water in it, we will come out, we will treat it at no additional cost, all of our services are covered by property taxes. So, what we're doing, the staff this year has just been amazing, just going out of their way to not only cover all the traditional service requests, but to do the additional work that is treating these pools. And you'll see, it's kind of hard to see, but one of our supervisors, I went to an abandoned house with her, and it was called in by just a wonderful resident of the county letting us know about it. The concern behind it all is obviously no one wants a nuisance of mosquitoes, but the type of mosquitoes that develop in these pools have the potential of carrying West Nile. And some things that you can do, I'm sure you're all aware of, wearing repellent containing DEET. I gave Lisa, and I can give some other people, we have a wipe that you can use that contains DEET to protect your skin. Make sure your screens are in good condition, and of course, drain standing water, that is the biggest thing, and then stay inside during dawn and dusk. And once again, yeah, the best way to prevent vector-borne disease is drain standing water, and if you ever have any questions or need our help, we're more than happy to go out there. We love working in this county, taking care of the residents of this county. We have some people who are very appreciative, and some people who didn't understand that we're just here to help versus chastise them for a neglected pool or something like that. So, our whole staff has gone through a lot of changes this year, a lot of good, positive changes. We're just being a lot more thorough than we've ever been, have a larger staff, and anything else you want to add?
I can't think of anything. Good for you, Joe.
Oh, thanks, you're so kind. So, yeah, that's about it. And once again, you can always contact us if you have any questions, or just say, hey, I have a graduation party, can you come out and do some spraying? And we, if we have about a week's notice, we can get someone out there to do some residual spraying for the event to make sure that your partygoers don't get eaten alive, and then come with stakes at our office saying you don't do your job. But, yeah, there's lots of different information, we could probably bore you for hours, but this is pretty much the gist of it.
Okay.
Right?
Very good.
Ms. Freeman?
I have a quick question, and unfortunately, I think I know the answer to it. Is DDT ever going to be a possibility again?
With the, a D in?
No, DDT. DDT, never?
No, we're losing products all the time.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay. So, that almost eradicated malaria, I mean, at one point.
Exactly, yeah. And you know, there's papers out there that say DDT got a bad rap, and it's kind of maybe not the best science that got it down, but I don't see it ever coming back, honestly.
I had a question pertaining to, like, people that have these small fountains, decorative things in the gardens and stuff like that. Does straight chlorine neutralize the larvas and all that?
That'll kill larvae, absolutely.
Okay.
That's the reason a well-maintained pool won't breed mosquitoes.
Okay.
They don't want to lay their eggs in that chlorinated water.
Okay.
Just as long as it's kept up with it.
Mm-hmm.
Chlorine won't last all summer if you treat it well.
Right, right, yeah, I get that part.
Yeah, I just, the more I drive around in northeast Merced, in this neighborhood where we have eighties egypti, the more and more of these water features I find, and they're great, and they're beautiful, and if they're working well, it's not a problem. I'll give you an example, I went to a lady's backyard, and she had a fountain, and she said, my fountain runs on timer, is that good enough? And I said, well, I don't know. And I looked in her fountain, and it was breeding mosquito larvae, so I don't know how often she was running it, but it wasn't enough, so.
Timer for once every ten years.
I would say continually, you probably don't have a problem with that water flowing. Timer, maybe not.
I've noticed over at Tractor Supply, they have, it's a pellet that people can put into pools and all kinds of other things. Are those effective at all, do you know?
You know, I don't know exactly what product you're talking about. I've seen stuff in other hardware stores called dunks, and they use a material called BTI. It's actually a bacteria that kills mosquitoes. They work, I've heard that sometimes these companies get BTI from questionable sources or let it sit around too long, and it might not be as effective as another company's dunks. But, yeah, that stuff should work.
Okay. And as to the aerial spraying, couple of questions on that. What time of year do you prefer to do that?
Aerial spray for adults or for?
Well, I'm just curious, you know, because last, I think it was last year, we had gotten a notice that it was at the end of the breeding season, which I don't know when that is, but it was towards the end.
Aerial spray for adults, a lot of time coincides with when we find West Nile and where we find West Nile. Oftentimes, that is towards the end of the breeding season, in fall. In fall, our mosquito adult populations are peaking, actually, so there can be a spike in West Nile, so especially.
Based on the temperature and weather?
Yeah, all that stuff plays a factor, so based on spraying over town for adults, a lot of that is driven by where we're finding West Nile virus.
And what is it, the material that you're actually putting out?
You know, usually, it's a pyrethrin, it's either natural pyrethrin or synthetic pyrethrin, comes from the chrysanthemum flower. I know we used a product by the name, well, Zenivex is the trade name, the material, the active is edofen prox. We try to use multiple materials. If you start spraying the same thing over and over, you can't get resistance, so we like to mix those actives up, just so we don't end up with a mosquito population that doesn't die from a certain material.
I guess the question that everybody would want to know is, what does it do as far as, like, water in a pool, pets, fruits and vegetables, trees, things like that?
Extremely safe, everything we spray is a public-use pesticide, it has very low toxicity. I would say the materials we spray from the air, very little of it even hits the ground, we want it to remain in the air column to kill mosquitoes. We do have labels for all the materials we spray, those are available to the public. If you ever have a question on, hey, what are you spraying, what does it do, what's it labeled for, we have that. It's all been approved by the federal EPA, California EPA, and use the right way, and we use it according to the label they're saying.
Okay. And lastly, for the general public, please don't call my business number and tell me about a plane that's flying low over your house, because I have no control over any of that sort of thing. We don't do that, call the county, and their number is?
We, and with Paige here handling our public relations, I think we are getting better at getting some of those spray notifications out. I mean, tell them who you notify every time we go spray.
So, like I mentioned, we do have our website and our social media on Facebook, so, for example, tonight, we do have our pilot going out in the Lost Banos area because there was a little bit of a breakout, mosquito breakout, which is common for the area due to the wetlands. So, what we do is, the second we receive the aerial maps and know exactly where we're covering, we post it on our website, which is www.mcmosquito.org, and once you go on the website, at the top right corner, there's a little area that says service requests and spray notifications, and you can go on that, and it will have the most up, our most recent update on our aerial and ground spray, and then, as well as when we do it on our social media, we make it a Facebook status where anyone's open to be our friend or like the page, and it will always be updated the second we know and have a confirmation on what areas we're covering. A lot of the times when we do aerial spraying, it will be more rural areas, if there are little outbreaks, not necessarily a bad thing, but just if it's that time of year and mosquitoes are breeding, then, for example, like the Lost Banos area, which just gets pretty bad, and where we receive a lot of our service requests, we will cover the, more of the city areas. But that's only, we only do that when our general manager and talks to our technicians, and they all coordinate to see when it's necessary to go out to.
But do we, like, PD and sheriff, don't we know?
Right, we fax it over to police departments and different county offices, and just try and get in contact with everyone as possible. We'd, I believe, get in touch with some of the news agencies, it's just up to their discretion if they want to share it or not, but it will always, always be on our website and social media, so.
I'm curious if you also use local media, radio stations, all the different radio stations?
Yeah, I do have a connection with one of the radio companies around here, and that's when it gets in the thick of season, I'll either just do a general, this is how you contact us, this is what you should be doing, draining standing water, things like that. We don't necessarily utilize that for different reasons for spray notifications, but we will generate a few different messages just so while people are driving down the highway, they know, oh, yeah, I did have issues last night, or my neighbor's pool is looking pretty nasty right now, and I know who to call. As well as, we do utilize a dead bird hotline if, to do some West Nile surveillance, and we have a number that we provide, a 1-800 number, and once again, it's on our website, or if you call the office, I can connect you to it, and if you notice a dead bird in your area, if it happens to look like it has been dead for a little less than twenty-four hours, our technicians will personally go out and pick it up so we can do some testing on it. So, we have lots of different ways to just help the public out, and once again, it's all covered by property taxes.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next item is Love At Water.
I don't know about you all, but I'll kind of get you. Yeah, that effect, I'm like. Hi, I'm Gloria Perez from Love At Water. Cheryl Holman from Bellevue School.
John Mott from New Life Community Church.
Gloria.
Okay, this is going to be quick, kind of, I think. Okay, I even wrote notes, okay. First of all, I just want to say thank you for your guys' leadership. This was the first year that we had almost all of you there for Love At Water, and I mean that from my heart, because I've been asking and asking, and you know what, and you guys all showed up. I'm just, I just really appreciate that, I really do. And again, I used to say all the time is that you guys can't do this by yourself, you need volunteers, you need people to love on their city and care for their city, and they show up. I mean, as you know, you've seen, they show up, so I wanted to get that out of the way. So, we completed over ten, about ten, eleven projects, and we had, gosh, over, about, a little bit over than three hundred volunteers. It was cool because, you know, everybody, most people came back to Ralston Park and got lunch served by the mayor and Lori, and who else was there? I guess that's it, right? Oh, and Todd, I'm sorry, and the chief of police, well, he wasn't there because he was out of town, but Todd was there. So, that was amazing. So, I also want to say is that, and I want to thank Lori, Lori, that you had the opportunity, or I had the opportunity to show you exactly what Love At Water is about. She was with me, we rode in my truck, we went to all different projects, we participated and helped out, and so it was an honor because she's the first city manager, our interim city manager, that was with me and went to determinaria, we walked determinaria, we went to the, what is that, the bike, what's that called?
BMX.
BMX, BMX area where we had over eighteen prisoners basically cleaning that up, and you know what, they did an awesome job. So, I just wanted to share that really quick and thank the chief, and thank you guys for going out there and representing our city, because it was noticed, it was noticed. So, in that said, I wanted Pastor to say something with that said.
Yeah, I would like to say personally, Gloria has already said, I'd like to say thank you to the mayor, city council, city manager, waterman, thank you for coming out and being a part of the day. It is noticed when the elected officials not just gather on nights like this to make decisions that affect the whole community, but when you also come out and you serve right alongside. We had over three hundred volunteers who were out that day, your presence was noticed, and it wasn't just because of the donuts that were brought, that was, that's always a good plus, but, you know, I teach a class at the President's Pacific, and there's one of the pri- And there's, one of the projects that our students do is they do a service project where they need to do so much time of community volunteer work and then write a paper responding to what they learned from the experience of serving, because we're a selfish people. And we tend to hope others will serve us, but there's something transformative about serving. Anyway, and one of the papers I was able to read, they came out, a couple of them came out and helped with the Love at Water event. And one of the students wrote in their paper, and it was really cool for me to see this from that perspective, how impressed, the first thing that impressed them about the day was that the mayor and the city council was out serving side by side with the regular folk of the community. Now, you may think of yourself as regular folk, and I hope you do. But that's not always how you are viewed. Just because of your position and the leadership that you serve the community with, to be able to do that and combine it with servanthood is impressive. And so I want to say, it's not just noticed by me and those of us sitting up here who've got a vested interest in seeing Love at Water do something, because we think it's going to make a difference in the community we live in. But it's noticed by those who just come out, just average folk who say, I'm going to go out and check this out because I don't know what it is. But they see our leaders serving side by side with the rest of the community. And it gives them a different impression of what we're about. So thank you very much.
Cheryl Holman from Bellevue School. And I spoke with you in January with the idea to hopefully get together and clean up the determinaria. And I was really excited when you took an interest in that. And then I was really excited on I Love at Water Day to see all of you out there, and especially Mr. Vineyard. So I was disappointed that he wasn't here tonight. However, he got the broom out, he was sweeping, picking up trash, he was loading up his truck with broken down couches and chairs. And he helped rake the grasses that were overgrown. And he, and I believe it might have been his grandson, were really, really working the entire time. And I have a few photos to share. And I just wanted to thank him especially, that he really got out there into the trenches with all of us and really made a wonderful difference. So thank you very much for that. So I have the letter and the photos, okay.
And I think Ms. Waterman wants to clarify, that was her grandson that was-
Oh, thank you, it was her grandson. Very helpful young man. He was fantastic. And Mr. Vineyard was like his teacher, showing him how to use the shovel correctly. No, you rake this way. And I just thought it was a fabulous relationship, so that's why I thought they were related. It's very good.
Well, I want to thank all of you and Gloria for, you know, year after year coming up and, you know, putting this all together and making it all. Yep, yep. It's wonderful to have somebody within the community that has that type of dedication, and I thank you. And I'm sure the council will.
Very welcome. Very welcome, but we'll see you guys in September. Either September or October, we're not for sure yet. But you'll be hearing me, from me.
I'm sure we will.
There's more work to do, right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is a joint legislative audit committee hearing naming City of Atwater a high-risk community.
Ms. Waterman. For those that, well, of course, it doesn't really make a whole lot of difference to the folks that are here. But in any case, we're having difficulties with the television feed this evening. And although it's all being recorded and to be shown at a later time, the live stream is dead. So unfortunately, it isn't going out live streamed tonight, but it is going to be recorded, okay? Just wanted to let everybody know. And it's, well, of course, everybody, live on YouTube. It is. Okay. It is, oh, I'm sorry, you're saying it's going out now, live on YouTube? Oh, okay, very good.
So on Wednesday, May 16, 2018, the Atwater, the City of Atwater was placed on the joint legislative audit committee agenda. Myself and deputy city manager, finance director, Laquender Deal, we took the morning express train, rode up there, worked while we were traveling, so I get that plug in, because it was really nice to be able to get, so we weren't away from the office all day, we were able to do some work on our way. We were met by city attorney White. They picked us up and we headed over to the meeting and wanted to thank, I just wanted to express my thanks to Senator Canela and Assemblymember Gray, because they were instrumental in pulling our item off of consent calendar. I don't know, I mean, as our items sometimes are on consent, they just approve it all in one motion. So had they not been instrumental in getting our item off of the agenda, we would not have been able to lobby to get an extension. So we were grateful that they were able to do that. We're with Senator Canela's assurances that the city is going to take the necessary action needed. Assembly Gray reached out to committee members, and they pulled the item and gave us a three-month extension. I'm going to let city attorney White go ahead and make the presentation. But I did want to get out there that it was through many different levels that we were able to get this extension approved. And we're very thankful for that, because it means significant impact to the city.
Yeah, I'm going to go over it, but probably just real quick. I also want to make sure that both Lori and Laquender get to do that they were deserved, because we were up late into the night trying to decide whether or not to even go to this hearing, because the information that we had is, the chances of us getting this pulled off of consent was, to say low would probably be being generous. So through their sheer tenacity and not, and thinking that the result was going to be already foregone, they hopped on the train to come up, you know, very early in the morning to get what is, you're going to find out, a very good result that comes with strings. And we're going to go through how we kind of got there and so on. But I wanted to give them their credit, because had Lori and Laquender not made that decision, we wouldn't have even been at that hearing. And I think in Lori's words, you know, we may go down, but they're going to see our face when they vote us down. So something along those lines. So anyway, with that, I want to give a little bit of an audit recap. And I, you know, I usually don't like to read what's in PowerPoints, but so many of these important, these points are really important. But the auditor's office has completed its initial assessment of the city, and it believes, and this is the state auditor, that the city is high-risk in terms of its budgetary practices and the way it governs itself, which is how we got to the point where we're at, having to go to Sacramento to present ourselves and plead our case before the state legislative committee. Before the, at the hearing, before the joint legislative audit committee, for a program that's only been in place for about five years, they considered a formal audit of the city's finances. And that was going to be scheduled to take place in January of, I think that says a typo, 2018, that should be 2019. City staff, with the help of Senator Canela's office, was successful in obtaining a continuance of this hearing. And both Assemblymember Gray and State Senator Canela were instrumental. Because of traffic constraints, Assemblymember Gray had to call some of his colleagues to have his colleagues pull it off of consent calendar so that we could even have the opportunity to present this issue and just not have it approved. And State Senator Canela literally went around in the middle of the meeting, talking to his own members and lobbying them in what was a fairly difficult lift for him. And probably, I'd hate to know what he owes his friends, and you know, he's going to have to buy the next beer probably. But in terms of being able to get them to go with him on the idea of continuing this item, because as you can imagine, when the auditor comes into you and tells you, hey, we have a community that's at risk, we have citizens who are at risk, the idea of overruling them to give them more times for this legislative body to prove that we can get our act together is not an easy one. Because the idea that we got there yesterday doesn't exist. This is a problem that has been systemic for some period of time. So I want to give Senator Canela his proper credit, because without him, without question, we would be in a different place today and having a very different report. And despite the city's, so despite the city's effort to create a restructuring and finance plan, the state auditor has submitted a proposal to JLEC requesting a formal audit of the city for the May 16, 2018 meeting. So that's the one that we attended. If you go to the next slide, okay. To give you a summary of what they were requesting, the state auditor was requesting a formal audit. And that has the effect of determining whether or not the city is officially high-risk. Not something just kind of in their opinion, but something on paper that determines them they're high-risk. And if you remember from our previous presentations, the consequences of that is we have to disclose that to our bond market and whenever the city needs to do anything to go get money. In other words, to kind of really oversimplify it, it's the equivalent of blowing our credit to some degree. The state had budgeted $212,000 for the audit of the city's finances. And they estimated that it would take state resources of 1,632 hours in Atwater auditing our stuff. This is just the state's time and the state's money. You can at least match or double that in terms of the, what would be required of the city in order to just comply with the auditor and their request. So you can see this is a fairly significant budgetary item. And we have, we are required under the law to comply with them. We don't have the idea of saying, hey, we're too busy, come back in a month from now. It doesn't work like that. They're here irrespective of what the other city's businesses or challenges facing them. We have to address that and address them. The auditor's initial assessment, so this is the assessment that was done earlier in the year, labeled the city's current financial condition high-risk, the financial forecast, high-risk, the pension and other post-employment benefits, high-risk, and staffing and public safety a medium-risk. And we'll talk a little bit about that. And again, this is an independent state body that came in and did this, that does this in other jurisdictions. You know, for however divided Atwater may be into different camps or philosophies or things of that nature, these folks have no agenda, other than to, well, they are the state, so I won't say they have no agenda. But there's no backstory with them. Factors that they considered in kind of reaching these conclusions, general fund expenditures have exceeded revenues for 10 of the past 11 years. That would be the equivalent of, for more than a decade, the city has spent more money each year than it has brought in. That doesn't mean that budgets weren't proposed, that weren't balanced when they came in. It meant that budgets weren't adhered to over a long extended period of time of a decade. And you may hear that the city has money in the bank. But I don't know if all of you know that, but money is oftentimes in government allocated and can't be commingled. Meaning, when you guys pay water funds, that has to go to water infrastructure, water service, and people doing things related to that water service. When you pay sewer, it's the same thing. That money may be all in the same account, it's kept track of, but that money may be all in the same account. But it can't just be used to, for instance, go and pay police officer salaries. So even if there's money in the bank, whether the money can be used for the functions of providing and operating a city is a different question. So in addition to running into a deficit, over the last 10 years, the city's annual fund deficits eliminated $5 million in general fund surplus. For those of you who don't know, the city has roughly, and Laquender, you can correct me, about $14 million general fund. So at one point in time, you had a really, really good reserve amount. And now you don't, you have nothing. The report excerpt, "The state auditor initially identified Atwater as a potentially high-risk entity due to its consistent general fund deficit, which has negatively affected Atwater's ability to deliver public services and to meet its long-term financial obligations." In other words, we are at a critical juncture at which even the most basic government functions are in question about whether or not the city has the ability to financially meet those needs. Real basic stuff. Go to the next slide. One of the issues that they specifically noted is the rising liability related to retirees' other post-employment benefits. That's what we call OPEB, it's kind of for short-term. And over the last four fiscal years, the city has contributed only the minimum necessary to pay yearly premiums for retiree health. In other words, even with contributing the minimum, even with being on furloughs, even with not giving raises to your employees, you still operate it at a deficit. And another one of the report excerpts, "If Atwater does not begin to fund these future costs, the growing OPEB liabilities could begin to affect the Atwater's credit rating, increasing the cost of borrowing money if it attempts to issue bonds." I find this somewhat ironic, they put this in the auditor's report when labeling a high-risk community has the same effect. But that's neither here nor there. So we go on to the next one, staffing and public safety deficiencies. And again, these are what the state auditor, these are annotations of the state auditor. These aren't mine. Turnover in city management and budgeting inadequacies. I mean, any time that you have more than a decade of basically general fund deficits, that's pretty easy to get hit with. And anytime you have the turnover rate at the city manager level and other positions, and look around and see as many interim positions as you do, it's not hard to figure that issue, turnover issue out either. But one of the challenges, and I don't know how many of you all know this, is the city's crime rate is nearly 20% higher than Merced County's crime rate. And is 34% higher than the state of California's overall. And Atwater's inability to control public safety costs, because we're spending more, undermines Atwater's efforts to eliminating its general fund deficit. In other words, rising crime and the cost to fight that crime is eroding the ability of us, because of our $14 million general fund budget, nine? Public safety? Eight is public safety. So over half. Let's go to the next one. So what do we, go ahead and go to the next one, okay. So what are we trying to do prior to, what were the city's efforts prior to the May 16 ending? The goal was to provide the city time to implement a restructuring and financial plan to address the state auditor's concern. That's what we were trying to go, we need time. And we have a new team in place, familiar, some of, at least some of them familiar, but in new roles. And coordinated outreach plan prior to the hearing. So we met with the state auditors or reached out to the state auditor's office, the JLEC committee members. And obviously, we were effective in getting Senator Canela and Assemblymember Gray's assistance. And then, so what happened? So as the city manager indicated, she, myself, the deputy city manager attended. We had our legislative advocates, which we don't charge for, who do lobbying every day, were there in attendance. So basically, it was kind of an all hands-on-deck effort to try to save the city in this high-risk label. 12 audits for JLEC consideration, and Atwater was placed on the consent calendar and was removed only through the efforts of Assemblymember Gray. Of those, 11 of the 12 audits were approved and only Atwater was continued. And again, I think you can thank both your city staff and in particular Senator Canela for that. So both myself and the interim city manager gave a presentation. And, well, we've talked about this, but we got 11-0 vote to retain, the committee voted 11-0 to retain the audit request for future consideration. And we're going to have to report back in August on what progress, if any, we've made. So we have a three-month timeline to be able to show a plan and significant improvement towards that, which literally means that every meeting from here on out will be dominated by the financial plan and trying to get whatever we need to get done to be able to show them that we shouldn't be going down the road of being labeled as high-risk. I think when I, go to the next slide, labeled this, we're about, we're in between process five and six, if you were to look at this. There's copies, we'll make copies if anyone needs one to make it clear to see. But this is not a good list to be on. Go to the next one. Let's go to, talk about some of the consequences. High-risk designation equates the state's oversight and control over local decisions, meaning that the state gets to come in and have a say in how you run your community, because you're essentially deemed to not be able to know how to govern. It's a nice way of putting it. Implementation of a corrective action plan to the state auditor's satisfaction, meaning it's to their satisfaction. It's not to the city of Atwater's or the people who live in the city of Atwater's satisfaction, it's to the state auditor's satisfaction. We would be required to give written updates every six months of the progress in implementing the plan. And the state auditor would determine when we've been successful in implementing that correct- when we've been successful in implementing that corrective action. So they get to determine when we get to not be high-risk, and it could be years. Significant city resources will be dedicated to meeting the auditor's timeline, not just if they do the audit, or frankly, not even, now we're having to spend significant resources to avoid it. If they do it, then we have to spend even more resources, and then the fight, and then the resources that would be required to get out of it, as well as the lack of local control, is the issue that's particularly important. The impact, the city's credit rating and potential bond issuances, which this idea that we can, let's just grow, let's bring more businesses in, let's get a better tax base. It erodes the ability to attract folks who want to do business in Atwater by being labeled high-risk. And it decreases confidence in the city's financial forecast, and let's be candid, it makes it really difficult to attract really good talent and candidates to work for your city, when they can work at other neighboring communities that might not be facing the same financial conundrum. So what are we doing for next steps? Through a combined effort, we're continuing to communicate with the J-LAC committee members and staff to make sure that they know that we're taking steps. Essentially, we're giving them updates after every city council meeting, saying, hey, we did this at this meeting. But they'll be looking very heavily at the budget that's adopted before July 1st, to make sure that the numbers in there are real and reflect not just Atwater's priorities, but what they consider to be the state's priorities in having us not go under. We're communicating, again, regularly with the state auditor's office, with Senator Canelo and Assemblymember Gray, asking them for any and all help that they can provide. And again, we're going to have a hearing in August of 2018, where we are going to have to be able to demonstrate significant progress towards, moving towards financial solvency. Cuts around the edges will no longer do it.
Doug, I want to just clarify, too, that this isn't a potential hearing. We will have a hearing, and then we're going to have to prove that we've implemented the changes that they're required, or show them the plan that we have outlined. So it is definitely going to be another hearing in August.
This is not optional, and we don't get to choose. And so with that, I just wanted to give you an update, because there's a lot of questions about what's going on at City Hall, where's time and resources and money being spent. So I think that, I can, I think Lori may want to talk about this a little bit herself, but from our perspective, irrespective of what other peripheral issues are going on that are of concern to the city, this is priority number one. There is no priority that could come even close to it, because it threatens your own ability to potentially govern yourself. So there's nothing that would be more important than losing your ability to self-govern, or blowing your credit. So this becomes issue number one, and all of our efforts are making sure that we have the resources necessary to be able to address this question that comes up in August. So with that, I don't know if you have any closing remarks?
When you see the budget coming forward, and when we have our workshops, some of the things that we're proposing are a direct result from this audit, or proposed audit, so they're going to be reflective in the budget process.
Thank you.
Comments from the public. At this time, any person may comment on any item which is not on the agenda. Please state your name and address for the record. Action will not be taken on an item that is not on the agenda. If it requires action, it will be referred to staff and/or placed on a future agenda. To comment on an item that is on the agenda, please wait until the item is read for consideration. Please limit your comments to a maximum of five minutes.
Anyone wishing to address the city council, please step forward, give your name for
Danny Hernandez, 1904 Canal here in Atwater. First of all, I want to advise people here that the city of Atwater is not a charter city. Second, the Police Officers Procedure Bill of Rights that Sergeant, I mean that Captain-Chief Sam Joseph was entitled to have, were not read to him, or you never exercised them. Under one of these, these sections of the Police Officers' Bill of Rights, under one of the sections in 3304, it says, "No chief of police may be removed by a public agency or appointing authority without providing the chief of police with written notice and the reason or reasons therefore, and an opportunity for administrative appeal." To this date, I don't think he's got it. He was just removed by an individual that just went in there and removed him without even saying anything except that somebody had taken a vote. And that is a hell of a violation that I want to take to the state when I leave here. The next thing, over time here, we've heard that there's a letter of approval from the Fair Political Practices Commission that Ms. Viera has. She's been asked for it, she hasn't surrendered it, she hasn't let nobody see it, and at this stage, I call the commission, personally, I don't think she has one. But on October the, on October the 17th, on or about October the 17th, we had a double shooting, or a shooting here in Wenton, or Wenton Way and Fuddlin, where an individual actually had been shot by two officers of the PD. They were put on administrative leave pending investigation of this event. There was an issue that came up with asking for one person to work days, or rather nights, in the absence of the manpower for this business that was going on with the PD. Ms. Viera went to a city manager and demanded to put her son back on days. And you're going to sit here and tell me that you don't have any conflict of interest? That is gross conflict The citizens of Atwater are therefore going to have a meeting for a recall of this city council, to include Cindy Viera, Paul Creighton, Brian Raymond. A recall meeting at Roston Park on Grove and Third will be held June 2nd, this coming Saturday at 11:00 a.m. And it's time to stop playing these games with Chief Sam Joseph. You don't have any right to keep him out at this stage. Here's the recall papers, and grant you, they're going to get done. Last meeting, we had an individual in here also, Doug White, threatening everybody with votes to discipline, taking him to Stanfrost County to have him charged, you know, for businesses of having to do with leaks. At this stage, I ended up going to the district attorney to find out if there's a statue of that nature. To the district attorney in Merced, there is not. So all these votes that you took, there's nothing to them. He's got no authority to do that. Furthermore, this individual here wants to go around arresting people and charging people and everything else, on or about, because ignorance of the law is no excuse.
Mr. Hernandez, I'm sorry, but your time has expired.
And our timer is not working, but I am keeping it on my phone.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff, community, Frank Johnson, Modesto, California, 608 13th Street. I don't know if what the city attorney spoke is on the agenda, but if I'm out of place, correct me. Tonight, I want to talk about analysis paralysis. The city, weeks ago, because of the city's failure to implement a sound corrective budget, amazingly, the state gave the city another 90 days to get the act together. The last city manager, Art DeWort, provided a detailed financial recovery plan and budget to solve this mess. A majority of the council have praised that plan and said it would be implemented, okay? Yet, it hasn't been implemented. Why not? Nobody has been laid off, you still have two battalion fire chiefs, Joseph is still costing the city almost $20,000 a month on leave, despite numerous expensive duplicative investigations, all establishing his gross misconduct. Then why hasn't, why hasn't he been terminated? It's high time to stop the over-analyzing analysis paralysis and do what it takes to save the city before it's too late. My question, if the state, for some strange reason, the city can't get it together, I know you can't answer me now, but maybe I can get an answer later. If the state does take over, does that mean that the city, the state will send a receiver to the city, and at that point, all financials are controlled by the state? That's my question. Thank you.
You've got to be quick.
I've got to be quick? I just want to say thank you to you guys, and, you know, you're going to get a handle on this, and Atwater's going to be okay. You're all doing a great job, and just continue to do so. Lori, you're doing great up there.
All right, good evening, and thank you guys for your time, patience, and presence. My name is Angel Duarte, and I'm here on behalf of Yosemite High School. Green Team, my goal here today is to bring to light asthma awareness, air quality, and facts pertaining to the issue of asthma, and to promote Project Stephanie Kessel. Here are some statistics that are alarming. One out of 12 people with asthma die from it. Asthma seems to be predominantly hereditary. $50 billion is spent on hospitalization a year. 3,600 Americans die each year from asthma. Approximately 35% of people ages 5 through 17 have asthma, compared to California's average 17.1%. Adults and senior citizens are at a higher rate than the average Californian. Adults are at a 4% higher rate, and senior citizens are at a 7% increase compared to the rest of California. And Savannah will fill you in on the air quality challenge.
Hi, my name is Savannah Vienova, and today I will be presenting the six different colored air quality flags and what they represent. Green is 0 to 50 means it is good air quality. Yellow is 200, is 51 to 100 for moderate. Orange is 101 to 150 is unhealthy for sensitive groups. Red is 151 to 200, is also unhealthy. Purple is 201 to 300 is very unhealthy. Maroon is 301 to 500 is hazardous. Please visit our website, Air Now website, EPA. I myself have asthma, and it prevents me from playing sports I love, and I've never really had the chance to play outside because of my asthma. And at our future city council meetings, we would like to ask the Atwater City Council to consider flying air quality flags in front of the Atwater City Hall and Community Center.
Jeff Rovero, one of the advisors for the Green Team, unfortunately, a student that was going to do a report on the background of what the Stephanie Kessel project is. Her child fell, and they're at the ER right now getting stitches, so we apologize for her absence and pray for her child. But a Modesto teacher named Stephanie Kessel, her article about her passing away came out the same day that our Green Team and Current Events class were talking about the air flag quality project. So they decided to go ahead and name the project after her. We contacted the family, they gave us permission to do so, and we're going to ask you guys, if you don't mind, we have the flags for you. If in the future you decide to fly them, we have flags for you, so there won't be any expense to the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff, for bringing these young adults here tonight. Mr. Raymond?
May I make a comment, real quick, Mayor?
Certainly.
I just want to commend you kids for coming. It takes a lot of courage to stand up here in front of your people and present a case, and you guys getting involved at such an early age is inspiring. So thank you guys for coming, I appreciate it.
We appreciate it. It's always a very good experience.
Yeah, and I think that that's, flying these flags to indicate air quality, I think, is something that I think this council can get behind. Thank you. Mr. Creighton?
Angel, good job. You guys look professional in your ties, and you guys are dressed nice tonight. You presented really well. So I want to commend you guys for that. That took a lot of courage to come up and do that, and you knocked it out of the ballpark. Good job.
Appreciate it. Thank you guys very much.
Ms. Waterman?
We originally had this item agendized for next meeting, but because the kids are going to be out of school, they wanted to come and make the presentation. So if you do want to take action, we can also, we can put it on the agenda for next, on the consent calendar, but they wanted to make their presentation tonight while they're still. So we appreciate it, you did a great job.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, next agenda item.
Consent calendar. Background information has been provided on all matters listed under the consent calendar. These items are considered to be routine. All items under the consent calendar are normally approved by one motion. If discussion is requested on any item, that item will be removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Are there any items on the consent calendar that council members would like to remove for separate consideration? I'd like to pull number seven. Are there any else? Are there any items on the consent calendar that any member from the audience would like to have pulled for separate consideration? Okay. Mr. Raymond?
I'm going to motion to approve the remainder of the consent calendar.
Mr. Creighton got ahead of you, so you can, okay. Okay, call for the question.
Creighton?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Then you're just absent. Viera?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Item number seven, ratification of approval of requests from Cal Fire, Atwater City Fire Department for MDA boot drive.
I realize that we got out of sync with this particular item, and that you already have in fact done the boot drive this past week. So actually, what I wanted to know from Chief White is, how much did you make?
Well, thank you. We made $3,699.69. We made three thousand six hundred ninety-nine dollars and sixty-nine cents. And, I apologize, um, I should have brought this up in the last council meeting to you guys before the, uh, the event happened, but, uh, I appreciate it and thank you. It was a success this year. We're down, I think, about twenty percent from last year, but still to be able to pull thirty-seven hundred dollars off in about a four to five hour, without anybody getting hurt, is, is a good cause to a, a good program. I tried to get a total number, last year we were at forty-six thousand. We set a goal throughout the unit of Mariposa Merced and, uh, Madera Counties to reach the fifty thousand. They're still in Fresno right now doing the final counts, but I wanted a final count for the city of Atwater because I knew it was coming up on the agenda today. So, I will have a final count for, uh, for sure to see if we met our goal throughout the unit or not.
Beautiful. Yeah, you guys do a great job with that and I wanted to recognize you tonight for, for doing that. You do it every year and it's, it's a successful program and you guys put the effort in and we appreciate it. And I'm sure MDA appreciates it as well.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay.
This item needs ratified?
Motion approved.
Second.
Second.
We have a second with Mr. Price already?
Oh.
But thanks, anyway. I appreciate this.
Ms. Vera?
Call for the question.
Mr. Vineyard is absent. Creighton?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
This motion is ratified. Moving to petitions and communications. Request from Atwater Fourth of July Committee to co-sponsor annual event.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Glad to be here again. Uh, we got this new thing called Independence Day. We're gonna try to celebrate this year in Atwater. Um, we started a cooperation, or somebody started a cooperation, between the city of Atwater and the Fourth of July Committee in nineteen fifty-nine. That's when the first events were started being formed. Committee from Castle Orpheus Base, uh, we believe it was the Women's Auxiliary, worked with the city of Atwater officials and got it all started and it's, it's grown over the years. The, the amount of, um, work between the two entities, the Fourth of July and the city, has changed dramatically over the years, but it's always, it's always been fine. At one point, when things were, were financially good with both entities, uh, the city would put, uh, employees out there, keep the parks clean. They do everything they can. At one point, we even talked to you guys into carrying our insurance and stuff like that for you, for us, but, uh, we know that those days are gone. Uh, we've been doing just fine and it's, we do fine because you support us in every other possible way and we appreciate it. You, you help take down barriers and then do what you can and then it makes, uh, an event that, oh, when I started, we drew about ten thousand people, which is a heck of a draw. Uh, and for the past three years, we've hit forty-five thousand people approximately. So, um, you guys are doing a good job and, and we're enjoying every minute of it. So, anyway, um, what we'd like to do is just get permission to do it again this year. Um, we feel that this could possibly be the biggest year ever for us with the, with the big names out at the Castle Concert. Uh, we have more than, uh, five hundred more ordinances going off at the Fourth of July Firework Show than we've ever had before. Uh, you know, we've gotten to be pretty well-known for our good show and it's gonna be even gooder this year. So, uh, hopefully, this, since this is my last year doing it, it'll, it'll be one of the best around and, uh, and things will work out great over the next fifty or sixty years for the Atwater and the Fourth of July Committee working together with the city. Um, we would like, we, we presented a list to, uh, Ms. Waterman on the things that we need to coordinate, barriers and, and street closures and things like that. Uh, it hasn't probably changed in ten years much. Um, and we're looking for that to go pretty smooth. We wanted to remind everybody that you can go to our website, which is www.atwaterfourthofjuly.com and download just about every form or get any information you need. You can email us directly at atwaterfourthofjuly@yahoo.com and, uh, we'll, we'll get back to you just as fast as we can. Or you can, you can write us at atwaterfourthofjuly@postofficebox4 in Atwater, California and we'll get, uh, things going like that. We're trying to always sign up more booths for vendors. Um, you could be a nonprofit, a business, a church, club, sports organizations. We've had it all. Um, we've had, we've had, uh, families that come out and rent a twelve by twelve space in the middle of the park just so they could sit there and watch people all day. You know, so it, it, it's unlimited. Um, so, we, we'd love to have, uh, we'd love to have more vendors. Every, as long as we have room, we'll keep adding vendors. I, we'll have to say we're full on food vendors again this year. Um, but, uh, everything else, we are more than open to. Um, the downside of this year, um, last year was a, was a great year. Financially, uh, we recovered really, really well. We did, uh, wonderful in donations and, and cans and t-shirts and booth sales and things like that. This year, um, even at this late date, we have only raised twenty percent of what we've raised in the past by this date in donations and can sales, you know, the change cans that we put in stores. You can kind of understand business donations because everybody's donating for the same, you know, after the same piece of pie. Um, but we just need maybe some of you guys to, to put the word out, tell them, uh, we'll, uh, we really support any donation at all. Uh, one of the disappointing things is the, the cans that we put around town. Some of the major corporations have stopped letting people put cans on their counters. Rules and regulations. Uh, there, there's other places around town that were disappointed, that they've made the, the decision that they just don't want, uh, to mess with it. Uh, one of our biggest collection points aren't in market. This year has decided, uh, they don't want cans on their counters. So far, we're at half of what we usually collect in those little tiny change cans. So, if you guys know of anybody that would be willing to put our change can out on a counter, uh, we would more than appreciate it. Um, t-shirt sales will start next week. Just want to invite everybody to stop by the Fourth of July. We're gonna, we, we like to promote all the booths and things like that. We have the tug of war that's gonna be happening this year, get some competitions going. Uh, we have the Margarita Gardens at the pavilion in the park. The Rotary Club has, uh, Beer Gardens at the Women's Club over there. And you can spend a whole day with your family and friends out there at the park. At four o'clock, when we shut that thing down, uh, we open up Castle Air Base about, uh, six o'clock. And we have Danny Castro's band playing out there and we have Mike Hammer and the Nails this year. Uh, usually, when Mike Hammer and the Nails get out there, it's really, really busy because he's a local favorite and Danny Castro draws people from all over the place. So, uh, get there early and pick out your spot in the grass, bring your blankets or your lawn chairs and we'll have a good time. We always warn everybody that when you're, when we go out to Castle and we, we cram ten to fifteen thousand people in there and they trickle in pretty steadily, but everybody wants to come home at the exact same moment. And there's only two outlets, so you can only let so much water out of a bottle at one time. So, we're, uh, we're trying to get the message across to just sit there in the grass and enjoy the night air and, and, uh, have some fun, relax before you hop in your car to try to beat somebody else off the base. But, other than that, we're hoping that you'll sign off on us again this year. Just a reminder, if, if we do the five-year approval like we have done in the past, I need each year's dates and year mentioned separately because the, uh, Merced Environmental Health, for some reason, won't take Fourth of July twenty eighteen through twenty twenty-three. They, they gotta see every single date on there. So, anyway, if there's any questions, um, I'd be glad to answer them or, or lie about them. I'll, I'll make it up as I go along.
Well, Greg, you missed a couple of things.
Oh.
Our theme for this year?
Oh, that's right. Our theme is, is a salute to, uh, police, fire, and, and emergency, first responders. Uh, that's a big one. We've talked about it for years and years. We've, 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 uh, celebrated them individually over the years here and there, but, uh, they've never really gotten the big deal that they deserve because, uh, they are a big deal and they save our lives. They aren't just friends in our community. They are, they are the people that saves your neighbor or your grandma or, or something like that and they need the recognition and the Fourth of July is a perfect place for it to happen.
And the Third of July?
And the Third of July, that's right. We have the, uh, we have, uh, a band Flashback playing the night before the Fourth at the, at the pavilion at the park. So, the vendors setting up early. Might get a little extra, uh, business, but it'll also bring that community to the park for a free concert and, uh, just enjoy themselves and, uh, get ready for the Fourth of July. So... That'll do it unless you got something else.
Well, I just wanted to let everybody know also, there was a lot of, uh, concern about the sound system out, uh, at Castle. Uh, last year, the sound company who does the stage and sound did a great job for what they had, but unfortunately, it wasn't, uh, they underestimated what was out there. Uh, the crowd was estimated last year at somewhere in the neighborhood of seventeen thousand people. And they told me this year, when they were out doing a site visit out here, that, uh, we draw more than they do up at Cal Expo up in Sacramento. So, uh, that's, that's really a, a true testament to your efforts, Greg, and everyone on the committee. It's, it's, it's a big deal. So, this year's sound and everything is gonna be much improved and, um, it's gonna be a great show out there, so.
I, I hope so. You know, the, when you, when you're in an organization, as long as I've been there, you never like to leave on a bad note. So, I'm hoping that it'll be a good year. July fifth, I retire this year and, and, uh, I'm, I'm already halfway regretting it, but health problems and a few things have popped up on me and I just need to take it easy for a while, so.
Mr. Heller, do you have a question?
I actually just wanted to mention, if you'll reach out to, to me, uh, we'd like to put one of your cans in our business, so.
Oh.
Please, please reach out to me.
Fantastic.
Okay. So, we need a, yes, Mr. Creighton?
I just want to ask a couple of questions. So, I understand there's, so people know that we're going through this financial crisis and we can't afford much. I understand there's no cost to the city for this.
No cost to the city. We don't use laborers from the city for that day or the day before other than maybe to unlock the bathroom.
Just simple things and like the trash companies donating dumpsters and Powell and everybody else's.
Trash cans are delivered early during the week when it's, uh, regular work hours.
Maybe explain the, all the volunteers that are doing all the work that people would perceive that police would be doing or city staff, because you guys cover all of that.
Correct. Um, it, it used to be, in the old days, um, you could find several service organizations or groups that would come clean up the park and, uh, uh, you know, help set things up and things like that. But, we've become so big, um, you know, you can't expect a Cub Scout group to clean up after forty-five thousand people. So, we, we actually pay cleanup crews to come in at both, uh, Ralston Park and Castle to clean up afterwards and during the event. Um, and then we pay for our own, um, when there's added security needed, we pay for our own security. We don't have any park, uh, employees that have to come down there, of course, unless there's a water break or something like that. But, uh, uh, other than it being inconvenient to some of the folks getting ready for it, I know it's tough to get every single barricade in town rounded up and things like that and we appreciate it. Um, sometimes we even come out to the, to the courtyard and pick up the barricades ourself if you need us to, so. Um, we pay for all the labor. If we can't get it for free, we pay for the labor and it keeps the city from having to dig into their pockets.
I just want to commend you on what you guys are doing. Uh, another just, another city just down the street from us to the south canceled their Fourth of July. So, with what you guys have put in place, we get to continue the, uh, enjoyment and the celebration like never before. It's getting bigger and bigger, so I want to thank the entire Fourth of July Committee for all the work you guys have done and what a great event you guys put on and everybody's coming to Atwater, we need that.
Yeah, over the last ten years, and I, I monitor this kind of thing all the time. Within, I'd say, the last ten years, within five hundred miles of us, I know of at least twenty of these Fourth of July celebrations that have stopped happening because of costs and, you know, putting them together and problems. In Atwater, we, we intentionally run it as a mom and pop kind of thing. We try not to get all the bureaucracy involved and, and it has paid off and you guys have helped pay it off. I mean, it, it's, uh, it's, it's, it's part of the valley's history. It isn't just Atwater. We have people that come from the Bay Area. We were in twice now that I know of. We've been in San Francisco's newspaper as one of the small-town Fourth of Julies to go see. You know, so, uh, you guys can be very proud of your city when, uh, when you've helped put this thing on. So, thank you.
It is the big deal.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Greg, and thank you for your years of dedication to this, uh, event. This is, it, it wouldn't have happened without you and some very dedicated people and, uh, we'll talk about your being the last year here.
There's, there's always that next guy in line that, that does just as well as the last guy. It, it might take him a year to get used to it, but, you know, I always say volunteers are like a link in a chain. You're, you're just one link in the middle of it and Atwater City has made that chain strong. And, uh, they're, the new link will, uh, work with you guys really well too, I'm sure.
Yep.
Anyway, thank you.
Yep. And just as a footnote, uh, this is, uh, the only Fourth of July event that's happening on the Fourth of July. Others are having it on the weekend preceding the Fourth of July. So, um, that's why we get a lot of folks here because they want to see the fireworks and be entertained. And so, uh, our numbers, I think you're correct. I think we're gonna have a huge event and this town is gonna be overwhelmed and rightfully so. And, uh, I'll tell you, um, th- this is the kind of event in this city that I look forward to. This and the, uh, Christmas celebration are just the, the best in the entire valley.
Yeah, it, it's fun. I, I did forget to mention that this year's Grand Marshal is one, one of the people in town that have always worked behind the scenes, gets everything done for all of us. Um, you may or may not know her, but, uh, she's a hard worker for a lot of organizations, Kathy Jensen. She, uh, she, she has done a great job for the city of Atwater for decades and decades. Her, her family used to own a store downtown at the turn of the century. You know, so, they were the Saka family and, and she's deserved it for fifty years and now she's the Grand Marshal, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Okay. Is this just an information item? Okay, I'll make the motion. Except, uh, staff's recommendation.
Second.
Off of the question.
Ms. Vera?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
And for clarification, this motion is to approve the request from Atwater Fourth of July Committee to co-sponsor the annual Fourth of July event for the next five years, including July third and fourth of twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, and twenty twenty-three. This motion passes.
Um, prior to us getting into our, um, well, let's go through the treasurer's report first.
Okay. Funding and budget matters, treasurer report for the month of April twenty eighteen.
Mr. Heller.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you is the treasurer's report for April.
Any comments to Mr. Heller's report? If not, entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Off of the question.
Vera?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
This motion carry, uh, passes.
Okay, uh, prior to item number ten, we will take a ten-minute break.
Report regarding fiscal year 2018-2019 preliminary budget overview.
So before you is a, a preliminary budget. So earlier we talked about the Joint Legislative Audit Committee, what they're looking at, what they're going to be reviewing. So tonight we just have a breakdown of some of the different items that we are looking into while considering the budget. Part of it is the Financial Solvency Plan implementations, general fund overview, enterprise funds overview, and other funds overview. So Deputy City Manager Laquinder Dial is going to talk about these.
Thank you Lori. So for the, as we went over the high-risk audit presentation or kind of overview what we did on May 16th. So we tried to implement at least few things to show the state that we are taking initiative to start implementing all these, all this financial solvency plan we have in place. So for the reserves, that was a big concern state had regarding our OPEB liabilities, pension liabilities, and of course our general fund deficit. So we initially started these reserves with higher amount, but as we go through the spreadsheet, you will see it was difficult to cut costs because we already have cut costs few years back and there was not that much to cut. But we are, at this point, we are proposing to start our general fund reserve with hundred thousand dollars and OPEB liabilities for fifty thousand dollars and pension liabilities fifty thousand dollars. Then another concern state had was the inter-fund transfers. The city has an inter-fund transfer coming from Major H to general fund to cover public safety cost every year. So since they, they do not want to see that inter-fund transfer, we decided to eliminate that and decided to move those officers straight to Major H. So we won't have that 1.1 million transfer anymore. Another area they were concerned about was our utility rates. We do have a utility rate study pending for wastewater and for water rates. That will be presented to the city council next month in June, hopefully on June 25th. To eliminate our deficit, to show the state that we are taking initiatives, we have conducted, conducted or we hired one appraisal company to do appraisal on one of the city's surplus properties. And that appraisal came in, the report was submitted to the state as well before May 16th, just to show them that we do have a, a plan in place. Then city is also conducting a list of all the surplus properties. So that way we can have these one-time revenues to eliminate some of the deficits we have in funds. Next implementation we had was we are still maintaining furlough because at this point we believe that since all our financial solvency plan is not implemented, we still need to make some more reductions to sustain furlough for future years. The only concern we had was if we want to bring that back, we don't want to take it away next year again. So that was the, but at this point we have so many unpredictable changes came, coming up with the calpers and even internally we had few additional costs came up. So at this point we feel like it would not be recommended to bring furlough or eliminate furlough because it doesn't look like we can sustain it for long-term. We did implement or We did implement or calculated basically 1.5% COLA across the board for all the departments, all the funds to basically, to increase contribution for APO members only, for the PERS, for the PERS contribution. So by doing that, we do have a net savings about $10,000 because we, employees are picking up more cost on the PERS side.
Laquinder, can I just interrupt for a minute?
Sure.
So the discussions on the furloughs and the COLAs, that's all a negotiated item. So we will be meeting with the different unions and the different groups prior to any decisions or anything that we move forward, but that's just something that's being looked at.
Another cost savings measures we looked at, we did have a meeting with CAL FIRE a month ago. Lori and myself was involved in that meeting, and we are considering freezing half battalion chief position to eliminate some cost from that CAL FIRE's contract, but nothing has been approved yet, so thus still in negotiations as well. Police department, we are planning to, or we are going to freeze few positions. So trying to keep the department at status code.
Again, I'm sorry, Laquinder, I'm just gonna interrupt just for a second. So these are all possibilities when we review the budget. It'll be discussed up here and when the council decides what recommendations they want to make and see happen, but these are things that, looking at the budget and the numbers that we're proposing, and in doing this, we're looking at every single department and what can possibly be looked at and maybe restructured, budgeted somehow differently, but each department is being looked at.
For recreation department, we are moving one admin assistant position to buildings to eliminate our contract or professional services cost. So I guess the analogy behind was that rather than getting contract services, we rather keep our own employees with the, with the city. Community development department, we do have a contract with BVH for planning and engineering services. Building and equipment maintenance allocations, these are internal funds which basically gets allocated to all the different departments. So for these two costs, we are only allocating half of that cost, total funded cost, to the departments to have less impact on general fund. These funds does have some fund balances available to be used, so that fund balance will cover half of those costs.
So you might ask if there's, we have some questions before we move on, and again, these are potential proposals and are not limited to, but things that are being identified.
Is there any question?
So, Mayor. Just to get my head around what we're doing here. So this, this is our first preliminary budget. We haven't talked about this amongst ourselves or with staff yet, and it's gonna be June 1st, next Monday. Usually this is done, February we're closing up, March, April, May. You guys have a budget by now we start looking at, so we're kinda behind the curve on this, right? We won't have a budget by July 1st, or we will?
We will. We're on track.
We have to.
Okay. With the information the attorney provided, what we just went through, the state, where you guys all drove up there.
We went in a train.
Right. And the financial crisis or doom that we're in, or I don't know what word I can most describe how bad things are. If you go back a couple slides, we show 1.5 COLA increase, maintained furloughs, 3% increase. Hypothetically, if the state was to come in, they're gonna slash. Where are we slashing so far up here? I don't see, I heard.
The items as far as the COLA, I'm sorry, I didn't want to interrupt, but I do wanna address the question that you have on the COLA and the furloughs. So those are things that potentially would be a cost savings. So when we have our budget workshop, we're gonna go over those items and show you how it may be a cost savings versus a, a cost increase, but.
Let's try to understand where you guys are coming from.
Right.
Because I've been told that the furloughs by not being open is costing us money because developers are moving on, going down the road. So we have to grow our way out of this, but we're not open for business to grow our way out of it. We have to make smart decisions, not convenient decisions, and I want more detail than, than what we just got there was how did you, what was your train of thought, why did you come up with, with this proposal in more detail? I'm not saying this is good or bad, I just wanna understand why you came up with where you're at. And then the implementations, a couple slides back about CAL FIRE, police department, recreation, community development, building and planning and engineering. Again, if the state comes in, they're, they're trying to get to a number which is zero deficit. And if I go back up here, we have deficits, and as we move forward, they're gonna show a lot more deficits. We have, how are you gonna get us to the zero? We have to be to zero plus a little bit for some errors. So what's the train of thought? So what should we be thinking of while we're listening to you give the presentation?
Well, state is aware that we have 2.3 million deficit, and they made it clear that day that it's not going to be resolved in one day either. They're aware of that. They wanted to see a plan that we have a plan, and we are taking initiative towards that plan to become financially solvent, and which we are because we are putting that surplus property for sale so that money will go towards the deficit alone. We are not planning to use it in any other way. Inter-fund transfers, they were concerned about that, even though we responded to them that, you know, it's a legit inter-transfer, but still to eliminate that and to show them that we are not commingling any money, we basically moved the officers so this way it's more cleaner. For the COLA, of course, we want to show some appreciation to our employees as well. To bring the morale up, we need to give them something. If we cannot get rid of furlough, we need to show some sort of appreciation. But I'm not here to give raises or anything either. So we did our analysis on that just because there was a $10,000 cost saving because we've been trying to eliminate prime overtime for PD. So this way, during negotiations, we can show that, okay, if you pick up 3% additional cost for your pension, that saves us money on, on the benefit side. So the net saving, additional net saving after giving COLA, just because they're picking up more on their cost is giving us $10,000 positive. So that will go towards our deficit, even though it's not a lot. Every mid-year or every time our overtime budget is over budget. So we have to make those adjustments. So if this way we can have less overtime.
So you're saying every year we're always over budget. That's the department head's responsibility. When I go through the general ledger, and I'm, say I get to run a department, I'm running Parks and Recreation, and they give me $500 for the year.
Right.
I have to maintain my operation within that $500, and we always go over, and this is one of the few cities we do that. So what are we doing different? Like the 1.5 COLA, I wanna give them 3% or whatever. They've given up a lot. But I sure don't wanna have to look at somebody and say, hey, we gave your peers a raise, and you're fired, you're fired, you're fired. So we need to use common sense on this, not to.
We did the kind of same thing. So we tried 3%, we tried 2%, and we, when we had a net savings, that's where we stopped. So at 1.5%, we had a net saving of $10,000. So if we are giving them 2% or 3%.
But we're still trying to get to the furlough, removal of the furloughs because the company needs to be open to do business. So that net saving, you're still down. We're not hitting the, the target is what I'm trying to show you.
I guess these are two separate issues right now, because if we are not giving COLA, then we probably will not get 3% contribution increase from the union.
What do you think, do you think the state would give us?
So if I could, because these are labor negotiation items, so probably not something we should probably do from the dice conceptually. I think what you have are conceptual things based off of the original finance plan that we've been able to get to with the hard decisions and individual components coming up.
But what I wanna make absolutely clear is that it comes down to our general fund is all about the employee costs. It's, it's not, we got $14 million, and of that, I think 12 million's straight employee costs, right off the bat. So I don't wanna get in the mud with, with the negotiation, I'm not trying to do that, but I'm just trying to shed light that, that that's the only place we can cut to save what we have to do, and we have to be creative and strategic, strategic about it. And if the state was to come in, they would just, they don't care who we are, they're just gonna do what they're gonna do. So we have to close that gap.
So at this point, these are still preliminary numbers. I mean, nothing is done yet, and we are not even looking to get any action on this item tonight. So I guess at this point, we are looking for a direction from you, from the city council.
Well, my question to you was, what's your train of thought? So I can, because if I know what staff's thinking, then I can follow you a little bit better. I wasn't understanding where you guys are coming from, and that's. I keep saying over and over again that it's 14 million, we have over 12 million in employee costs. How do we tackle that to where we can get to zero? I know the state said that we don't have to do, solve the whole problem overnight, but we have to solve it by 90 days or less.
Then 90 days, you have to have a plan in place, and you have to have, you have to have a budget that's, that's. There's all kinds of contingencies in this right now. So for instance, we only have $200,000 set aside for OPEB, CALPERS, and reserve. Is that even an acceptable number to the auditor? We'll get that from having some communication with them. They could require that to be $500,000, $600,000. If it's $500,000, $600,000, then for every dollar above 220, 222, then you add to that deficit of someplace else that you've gotta find a place to, to cut. And that's a fairly likely scenario. The other thing is, we haven't gone out to the different departments and said, hey, to your question, if I'm a department head, I have a budget and I've gotta operate into it. But we haven't sent out the budget and said, we've, they've been figuring out how much they can cut, and then the question is to the department head, can you make that work? And then there has to be some back and forth still to try to make this work. I think, to your question, a lot has happened in a very condensed time because, I mean, from the time that I came on, we originally got a reprieve from the Joint Legislative Audit Committee, and then we had less than a week to prepare for it when we found out about it. And, and everything is in the here and now, and the level of scrutiny and the exposure to the city is, is much, much more significant. I think it's safe to say that if you, with implementation of furloughs and with, and without giving any kind of raises, we'll call those trades, without giving any real raises, that you're somewhere in the vicinity of $225,000 to $600,000 to be even money. Not to be putting extra money away, to be even money.
And so to, on, on going back to the audit, we're always gonna keep going back to the audit. Part of that was transparency. So right now, what we're doing is presenting what we're working with, and then going forward, when we have the budget workshops, you'll know where our thought process are and where our numbers are.
But going to your point, we had that master calendar we went through. These individuals, whether it's, it's building, whether it's parks and rec, whether it is police, whether or not it's fire, each of those are gonna be brought back as individual action items because we as staff are authorized to make those decisions. It has to come from you. What you have in here are some projections on some things that if, if you do X, Y, and Z, which would be staff recommendation, we can get here.
But I don't see anything here, and you guys might correct me if I'm wrong, where we did any RFPs to see if we can do a cost competitive advantage of privatizing it or contracting that service out versus just deciding to keep it all in-house. I mean, where's our information for that? So like say, if we're gonna, say we're gonna do a landscape strip over in some landscape district, is it cheaper for our guys, or is it cheaper to contract it out?
I think that's the direction they want from us.
We are doing some analysis on different aspects like that.
But the time frame though for, for our adoption, that's a process to go through the RFP, RFQ, and you start gathering that data. We haven't done any of that.
So we can't do the RFP without getting ourselves in trouble. Until such time as you guys have made a decision on whether or not you wanna even go down that direction. So there's some baseline information that has to be gathered. The biggest impediment to time right now has been, and we've split it up between our office, city staff, between city council involvement. I mean, this is, this is a wide effort going during RGS. So everybody's divided up certain things, but it just takes a certain amount of time to be able to get information. The next meeting's gonna be really heavy on this because some stuff got pushed off because meetings with people who would implement whether, you know, different services.
So like, like staff can say, they could call Chocula, Madera, Fresno, what do you guys charge? What's, what's your hourly rate per city employee? Are we competitive? I mean, are we up or down? I mean, we need to know those kinda things as we move forward. That's what the data I need.
That's the analysis. We'll be bringing it back to you.
My, my question is, you know, we paid all the money getting Kendall and what's the company?
RGS.
RGS. Is this based off of what she put together?
She, she is, this is what staff, but Kendall and RGS is still doing some recommended proposals for us. They are doing some analysis on specific departments and restructuring of those departments. Things that may, I'm giving you options whether or not we would contract out versus in-house and the costs associated to that. So she is still getting that information, and it will be presented to you. This, tonight was just so that we had something to start with.
So for instance, the thing that Kendall has been tasked with, we'll have written reports in, in June, but she's out of the country for like two, three weeks, and, and so that means that we're not getting the presentation until late June.
So help, okay.
On the things that she's been tasked with.
Thank you, go Mayor. So, okay, the puzzle's coming together. It's a little bit difficult sometimes, although there's a lot of moving parts. So staff is trying to put together their budget without Kendall's data yet. They're gonna try to hit the target, and then she's gonna come in with her stuff, and then you're gonna fold that together, or some combination of that is what you're saying?
Yeah, so, so different budgets are gonna come down based off of information that she may come that reflects some, I mean, we're gonna have to adopt a budget with certain assumptions built into it. There's no way to meet the July 1st deadline.
And we have to adopt only a balanced budget?
My opinion, from a legal standpoint, unless you wanna be labeled high-risk, that whatever budget you adopt, better pencil. And there can't be this whole, you know, I think there's like this internal joke with Atwater. I don't know how much it permeates to the public. Like you adopt the budget on budget adoption night, and then it's a completely different budget the next day, and, and it's kind of like not worth the paper it was printed on.
Right.
So, I mean, in fairness to councils, we talked about the 10, 11 years of being, you know, of having these budget deficits.
Yeah, I mean, I look at this, I asked for a general ledger report, and you go through the last five, six years. We adopt the budget, and then those numbers change, and then it just goes right into a deficit spending, and they never come to council, and, and nobody's ever held accountable for it. But yeah, we're the, we're the body that gets the.
The blame.
Yeah, the blame for everything. So that's why I want real numbers and what you're thinking, where you're coming from when you're doing these things.
Right. So like we said, you know, some of the things are still pending, and just looking at the timeframe, it, it will be merged together later. A few of the studies she been conducting, and like for marijuana, we are not putting any revenue in at this point, and same thing for the cost side applies. So some of the unknowns we have.
So we're not making any assumptions, you're making actuarials is all we're plugging in?
Correct. So we, we are basically making adjustments based on our judgment at this point.
This will be the first year we've done that.
Correct.
Using actuarials instead of throwing a number out there and saying it would be X. So this is good.
No, usually every year we do provide a prior year's budget and prior one year's actuals in the budget. So they are usually based on that judgment. But this, this year we are making some adjustments to the staff level. But this, this year we are making some adjustments to the staff level and all that others just because we want to please the state as well. So that way they can be on board and not come over here and basically identify us as a high-risk agency, which is not good for our city at all.
Well, I just want to make one more statement and I'm done for this part. I don't want to appease the state, I want to save Atwater and we need to do that. I mean, the state's there to tell us what to do if we just can't do it. Let's save ourselves and do what we have to do. So I'm not going to let up on that.
No, no, we got that, when I said that it's a number one priority, it's the number one priority, but some of this stuff is going to have to get folded in as we go along because we can't make decisions and budget predictions until such time as we have information. I think that there's been, in my experience and in my little time in Atwater so far, there's an effort to try to please and do things quick and that results in not always doing things well. And I think that there has to be more of an emphasis on, even if it takes a little bit more time, doing things well. Whatever we're going to do, let's do really, really well. And whatever, we can't do really, really well, let's look at whether or not we really have to do it. And so this is, this is part of, this is part of that philosophy, but this is also an evolution and so trying to keep you guys involved in the process. But there's updates, multiple updates on almost every single one of these items. It's heavy next month because it's budget season.
Thank you, Mayor.
So we don't want to talk about the cost-saving measures, say for CAL, CAL Fire. We don't want to get into the weeds with that.
We're going to have a specific agenda item because you're going to have to approve the amendment and we have to get confirmation from folks in CAL Fire.
Okay, because I was going to say I've got a whole slew of questions on all of that stuff, so, okay.
Mayor, along with that, the items that we're talking about are items that were identified in that fiscal solvency workshop that we had in March. And so some of these items are coming to you. These are things that you've asked that we look into and that's why they're on there. So the budget is going to be based and aligned with that.
Okay, let's move on.
For general fund, we are, our revenue is about 13.2 million and expenditures are 13.5. So at this point, we do have a shortfall of about 225,000. And that is with the minimum amount for reserve, 100,000 for the general fund and 50 for OPEB liabilities and 50 for pension.
So this is the one time I wanted to try to jump in. This is the one thing that we just don't know where that number's going to go. We may run it by the auditor and they may say that this number needs to be 500, 600,000. And if that liability goes up, I mean, you're adding.
Your shortfall will go up.
Your shortfall goes up. So when we said that 200 to 600, that's part of the reason and that assumes everything else holds.
Yes.
That's a good question that the attorney brought up. We don't know where the state's going to be. So has anybody gone to the state auditor's website, looked over those cities, called those cities, that went through this audit, found out what that target is?
Oh, there's no.
I mean, they've got to have something. If they left them alone, they were putting a certain amount in, if they made them contribute more, there's a performance and a ratio that they need to add to that. Has anybody made that call?
No, well, I mean, we've been talking to the auditor's office, but remember, this is a legal program that has only existed for five, you know, essentially five years in response to Bell and Stockton and Valeo. And so, and there's only two cities that have, that are essentially in line ahead of us, which is Hemet and, can't remember the other one.
City of Lincoln was being.
Well, that was a different one, they're not high-risk, they're just, that was their, Montebello, yeah. And so there's only two cities ahead of us. And so there isn't a whole, there is no chart of like, if you do this, then you're good. It's going to be through negotiations and conversation. I think it's fair to say we're going to have to negotiate with the auditor to a number that they feel comfortable with and then work backwards.
And each one is unique in their own situation. So I get what you're driving at, but I don't know if, you know, what their strategy or what their plan or what their comments with the auditors were, would be germane to us. We are just as unique as Montebello or somebody else, so.
I think it's germane in the sense of process, not necessarily, not necessarily situational. What did they come in and what did they impose? How did that process work? You know, how much staff time did it take to, when you went through the audit? You know, those kinds of more operational questions, I think. But yes, I mean, I agree with you that each city is very unique and will be looked at a little bit differently, but I do think that there's things that you can take from those other experiences that have value.
Yeah, there's some commonality, I'm sure, you know, that will be the same in all situations and all cities. But my overall point is, is that we've got to fashion something for us. And I get what Paul's trying to get at. It's, you know, it may be beneficial to us to get some type of information from these other entities, but.
But I'll give you an example, Mayor. Like for instance, the idea that we would have less than a 5% reserve in 10 years from now, I mean, just, just from an operational standpoint, you know that that's probably not going to fly. So you're probably trying to get up to at least a 7, 8, ideally a 10% over 10 years. But that means that you're setting aside 1% per year in a reserve fund and you're not touching it, which means that you're also budgeting well and then, and then holding that budget sacrosanct. Like, you know, you go over your budget, sorry, and then not have to be only exceptions from like the council, so.
And I would like to clarify, until we don't have our deficit, the, whatever surplus we have will go towards the deficit. So until we are in a hole, basically having a reserve doesn't mean anything because everything goes towards the deficit.
Ms. Raymond.
My question, does this, all these numbers, I know it's just kind of a generality right now, does it assume that we're recovering all of our costs as well?
No, right now we do have a shortfall.
I see that. So what do we need to do to recover those costs?
I guess that's why we are here.
I can address that. We are, we're going to be reviewing our master fee schedule and we're going to be adopting or amending our fee structure to make sure that we're charging and recouping all legally defendable, reimbursable charges that we can do. So we are looking at that and that will be presented as well.
But I think to answer your question as well, so for instance, when I spend legal time on Ferrari Ranch or on a cannabis business doing a development agreement, it shows up on my bill, but the city only acts as a pass-through. So it's not a city cost and it's not money that the city would otherwise get. And that gets 100% covered by those folks. It's not a city expense, it's not a general fund expense. So that measure we have in place, it's really the fee schedule that we have to update.
Yeah, that's what I was getting to, is if we're operating with a 222,000 assumed shortfall, you know, how are we going to make that up? Because that's the major problem here. But this is informational, I'll be, I'll be good tonight.
And that's kind of where I was going, is I have a whole bunch of questions pertaining to all those departments and things I got to answer what you're talking about. So, go ahead.
So I guess when we have that study done from RGS, they will, the revenue section will increase. So these are the expenditures for each department under general fund. Still continue with the general fund expenditures, this is for police and fire department. Still with the general fund expenditures, a few of the departments. Then we get to the enterprise funds. We have water, our revenue is projected at 4.2 million, expenditures are at 3.8 and we do have a surplus of 370,000. And like I mentioned earlier.
Okay, can you make sure everyone silences their phones as well?
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
No problem. And so like I mentioned earlier, we do have a study pending for water and sewer, which will be coming to the city council for adoption next month, possibly on June 25. For sewer, we are projecting revenue at 12.1 million, expenditures are 11 million and we do have a surplus of 1.2 million. That surplus, I mean, for sewer, the surplus is a little bit bigger just because we did our refinancing for all the bonds and which brought our bond payment down. Sanitation, we are projecting revenue for 4.2 million and expenditures are 3.8. We do have a surplus of about 400,000. These are the other funds. So for Measure H, revenue is projected at 2.6, expenditures are 2.8 and we do have a shortfall under that fund as well for almost 200,000. Measure V, we're projecting to have a revenue of half million. Expenditures at this point, we are still revising because we are putting these projects under different, like a gas tax and Measure V, but even for Measure V, we have two separate funds. So that's why the, this fund does have a shortfall at this point, but it will be adjusted.
And some of these may be a local match or for projects that we have out there.
Right. So this needs to be still revised. Gas tax.
So just like, go back there for Measure V, so we're just estimating on the safe side here, on the conservative side?
Right.
Okay.
This way we can identify all our projects so that way we can allocate monies better. For gas tax, we are putting revenue is under, sorry, 710 grand, expenditures are 1.2 million and we do have a shortfall of close to a million just because, like I mentioned, we are deciding which projects can qualify under different funds. Community facility districts, this is the CFD, is for public safety. We are projecting revenue of 465, expenditures are 463 and we have a surplus only 2,000.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Hate to be the dead horse, but our state audit for this CFD, when Doug, the city attorney mentioned that basically it's, we're tanking our credit to do a CFD at Ferrari Ranch where we want to build our way out of this. If we mess this audit up and we can't do it, we won't be able to create CFDs because we have to bond for those. So this is, this is something I want everybody to focus on, on this, that that's, that's our credit right there. If we don't have credit, we can't do that. So we can't build things like that. So that's important because for police and fire and other things, as development comes in, it's going to be paying its way. And that'll be covering a lot of our police and fire and other stuff. That's a good thing, not a bad thing.
So we do have internal services account, thus revenue is 929, expenditures are 928. So these are the funds which are being allocated to all these different departments. So we try to basically have the cost equal to revenue. Employees' benefit, same thing, revenue is 757, then expenditures are 734, then we do have a surplus of 22,000. Risk management, another internal fund, revenue is at 575, expenditures are 1 million. So there is a difference of 450,000. This is the workers' comp portion, which is being allocated to all the departments based on the payroll amount. So that's why that amount is not included in the revenue. Information technology, we are projecting our revenue basically as 378, expenditures at 378. Like I said earlier, these are internally allocated funds, so we don't, we only budget whatever the cost would be. If you have any question, I'd be happy to answer, but I would like to mention that these are preliminary numbers. We are here to seek direction and if there is anything or any suggestions you have, then we are willing to take.
Anyone have any questions or comments or suggestions as Ms. Dale was asking? Go ahead, Paul.
Going back up to the furloughs, I mean, we need to get open five days a week. We've got to, I mean, we're going to pull ourselves out of this. We've got to figure out how to be open for business and make this work. Once we get back to zero, then we could do a lot better things, but we've got to get back to zero to be open for business.
Furloughs is going to be an agenda item, it just wouldn't be appropriate.
That's a big one for me because the employees have taken a cut right there, that's a cut right off the bat. And then we want to give them a pay raise instead of giving them their day back to work. And then, and the people of Atwater want city hall open five days a week. So we've got to figure out how to, to balance a teeter-totter. So I want to focus, my personal opinion is, I want to focus on maintain, or not maintaining, but eliminating the maintaining of the furloughs, elimination.
Mary, would you like to make any comments to that particular item? State your name for the record, please.
Mary McWaters asked me, Local 2703. You know, the employees sure would probably, would probably love to be up to 100%. I don't, I think what you're talking about will cost the city even more money than a one and a half. Granted, we are just getting ready to go into negotiations, so nothing has been agreed upon yet. So that hasn't been even mentioned. However, I don't know what you're looking at, if, it's going to cost the city a lot more money to put them at, working five days a week. They've been used to this schedule. They, what is it, it's a 10% cut? So you'd be talking about giving them 10% pay and we'd still be asking for COLA. I just don't, I don't know how the city can afford to do that right now. Eventually, yeah, and maybe it may have to be something we ease back into. I don't know what else I can say other than we would love to be back 100% someday, but we also don't want to lose jobs. We don't, people want to stay working. We don't want to lose positions. There's already, already talk of freezing vacant positions, so, but there's not a whole lot I can say yet because we're going into talks pretty soon.
Thank you, Mary.
Any questions for me? Thank you.
Thanks. I agree with Paul. I would like to see five days a week here as well, but I also agree with Mary. I don't want to see us give something that this year and next year, we're just going to turn around and walk it back. From what I've asked over the last couple of years is, are there any businesses that we lost or anything along those lines as a result of four days a week? And the answer is no. People have become accustomed to four days a week. Well, that's.
That'd be like McDonald's closing one day a week.
Okay, okay, well, we're not McDonald's. So the thing of it is, is that, that was their 12 million mistake. But, okay, okay, folks, listen, I'm just stating my opinion on this whole thing. I get it, I want to see five days a week. We've all said we would like to see five days a week. But, you know, dollars and cents are the realities of the whole thing. And again, I don't, I don't want to see us give something in one fiscal year and then turn around the next and take it right back. So that's, that's my view on that, in any case. Anything else for Laquinder?
Ms. Vier. I'm not sure if this is something that's been addressed or not. We brought it up a couple of different times. In order to possibly achieve both, where we can still have reduced hours but open city hall five days a week, can we look at like a split shift? So some works Monday through Thursday, some works Tuesday through Friday, so that, you know, everybody can. know, everybody gets what they, what they want. We have the, you know-
There's always a solution to everything.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, if I might, I, I asked that very same question and that wasn't received real well. Is that correct, Mary? You-
Yeah, and part of the reason, I will say-
Come up, please, come up and tell us.
Are we getting into negotiations here?
Yeah, I would, yeah.
No, I, I'm talking strictly from past questions that have been asked over the last cou- a couple of years.
Yeah, we talked about it before. It was brought up. And part of the reason it wasn't well received is, you know, we're so low staffed now here that you're going to have, you know, one person working and then you have safety issues. It's, it's just, it, it just didn't seem like it would work. And I, I don't know where all the complaints are coming from. I don't see that it's going to be, I don't see it being a big issue. But we've, we've already downsized so much that then you, you leave even more of a skeleton crew if you're going to split it up. So.
But we will be looking at all options.
Yeah, I, I agree. We must, you know. That's, 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 that's a no-brainer there at that point. I'm, I'm just saying though, two years ago, I asked that very same question about splitting shifts and that kind of stuff in order to get five days of coverage. I asked that through Regina back then. And those were the answers I was getting back then. So I'm not giving out anything that I don't think is inappropriate. Any other questions or comments? Go ahead, go ahead.
So this was our first dialogue. Things were good. We got, we got a lot of back and forth. I think we had some pretty good discussion up here. I think it's clear that you don't have a choice. You have direction that you're going to fix the budget and you're going to come in on target. There's no choice. We're not giving options here, are we?
No.
We're, we're going to hit the target. And it may be painful. I don't know where it's going to be painful or how it's going to be painful, but there's a lot of smart people sitting over there. The city manager capable and the city attorney is capable. Do your best. This is to save your, your city and what you guys have built. We want to save, we want to keep it. So we trust you.
We are proposing to have workshops for Tuesday and Wednesday, I believe, for June 5th, June 5th and 6th. So whichever date works with everybody's schedule, we can have a workshop, one or two days, whichever council prefers. We would like to take those recommendations as well.
We are looking for dates, but June 5th is an election date and they'll be set up here in chambers. So that one isn't a date that we're looking at. But we do, we are, we were hoping to have a workshop prior to our next meeting on the 11th.
Okay. Ms. Raymond?
I just have a question with the interim city manager. And it's, I've mentioned it before, but going back to the sewer enterprise funds where we're showing projected $1.2 billion surplus due to the refinance, the wastewater bonds. Is that something we're going to look at, passing that savings on to the residents, the ratepayers? Because we can't charge more than what it costs to provide the service. So I want to make sure we're doing everything right there. And I, I answer to 30,000 people out there and my job's to make sure they're taking care of the best of our ability.
Completely understand. I answer to the same people as well. Like I mentioned earlier that the study is pending. We will be bringing that to your approval in, on June 25th. That, that is considering all the refinancing we have done and all the cost savings we had. And it's also including all the cost we are seeing for, for the future, near future years for the water. Because the whole city has to be metered by a certain year. So it's including everything, all the cost savings and additional costs the city will be facing. So.
And so it's, so it's going for projected assumed costs as well?
Correct.
Okay.
Can I say something?
Yes.
I, I'd just like to say that I like what I'm seeing. I, I, I like that we're trying to give the employees an increase, we're, you know, however miniscule, miniscule it is. I think this looks much better. I'm not seeing a bunch of people being jobs cut and laid off. I think this is progress. And, and I appreciate the work you guys are doing here. You know, we're all really, when it comes right down to it, we're all working together here. And, you know, I represent my employee, my employees, your employees. I represent them. So I have to be their voice. But really, we all have the same goal. We want the city to do well. And our people want to keep their jobs. And they'd like to see a little bit of a raise. I mean, they haven't had anything for so long. But of course, like I said, we haven't decided, we haven't even gone back to the table yet, but we're getting ready to do that. But I, I do like what I'm seeing. I just wanted to say that.
I want to make a, a comment on that. And positive is a good thing. And it's a shame that, that we've put our employees through this since 2010 or 11. They've been slothing through this. And it's just a total shame. And this is going to be the year that's going to stop. So that we can move forward. We get back to zero. We don't have to go back to these, these days ever again. Because it's going to take tough decisions up here to make it right. Because as an employee, I wouldn't want to sit there and worry about, what are these guys going to do next year or the year after? We, we got to get to a point where we can move on and never, never do this again.
Well, you know, it, it's baby steps. And like, it's not going to happen overnight. And this is something that's going to take time. And I think my members also realize that. So.
And we appreciate that.
Helen Amran.
Outwater, California. Are all sewer rates the same for all residents?
For the residential sewer rates? Yes.
They're not?
Yes, for the all residential, they should be same. But we have so many different categories. So the rates are based on that, like if they have bigger house or consumption. So.
I have a daughter that has owned a home in Outwater for three years that she hasn't lived in it.
I, I always spoke to her.
And she pays a lot of money and has never used it. So I was just wondering if that was-
I, I had a discussion with her and-
Didn't tell me you discussed that with her. Okay. Never mind. I was just, I was just trying to-
So sewer, sewer rates are consistent, but water rates are not?
So what happens was, when the study was done, usually the Prop 218 studies are done for five years. So all the increases for sewer, they were already done two years prior. So then after the, once you're done with the Prop 218 study, then you just have CPI increase. So for sewer, for the prior year, we didn't have any CPI increase. But last year, we had 1% increase for sewer. But for water, we had one year's study left, which was this year, February. So that's why your rate changed during February month.
Okay, where are we at then? Any other questions or comments from anyone? Okay.
Our next item is interim city manager report and updates, the verbal update regarding fiscal solvency efforts.
So just to reiterate, we already discussed several of them already. But based on the direction from city council, staff is continuing to move forward through a series of austerity measures to bring the city's budget into balance while setting aside reserves for OPEB, PERS, and general fund. We're currently reviewing all of our entire master fee schedule to ensure we're utilizing appropriate and legally defensible cost recovering models across all departments. And we're also reviewing staff needs and delivery models for services across all departments. So all departments are being reviewed. And we're still on our timeframe. And we're going to, each time, we'll be bringing different items that we discussed, discussed in our March solvency plan. So we'll be bringing different items as far as our time, our timeline to you.
Okay, and number 12?
Verbal update regarding 123 trichloropropene TCP.
Way to go. TPC.
TCP.
CP, whatever.
So this, I'll, I'll just kind of touch on this. If there's any questions, I'll defer to our interim public works director, Brian Shaw. We just want the public to know that there is no immediate risk. I know that it's very scary, the reports that went out. But TCP is an organic chemical that's found in groundwater supplies. And in 2017, the Water Resources Control Board approved the maximum contaminant level for TCP of five parts per trillion. And compliance monitoring began in January 2018. So TCP has been identified in some of our groundwater supplies in Outwater. We're not alone. There's other agencies that have been identified as well. But know that Atwater is, our safety for our citizens is our prime concern. And so we are addressing and doing everything that's needed and required and above that to keep you updated with what's going on and what we're doing to correct this issue for you. So if you have, I think we had some handouts in the back earlier this evening as well. And then Mr. Shaw is available to take any questions that we might have.
Any further, Mr. Raymond?
Just real quick, from my understanding, we learned about the TCP in like 2005, but we were never really under the, or above the requirement or whatever until they changed it. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. They just, they got the MCL of five parts per trillion in January is when that started.
Okay.
It's been, it's been on the CCR.
That's, that's what I was going to ask you, Nick. It's, we've been reporting it since 2005.
Correct.
Okay. I just want to, so no one knows this isn't something we were hiding and, you know, just been sprung on everybody. It's been something that's been reported on since 2005.
Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Waterman? Okay.
Next item?
Next item?
Our next item is interim city attorney reports and updates, number 13, resolution submitting a ballot measure for the 2018 general municipal election authorizing the city to establish a business license tax on cannabis businesses.
Mr. Wade?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. What you have before you is an item that would allow the city to establish a tax on cannabis businesses ranging from 0% up to 15%. This item is not anticipated to ever in and of itself generate a single dollar of revenue. But rather, it's, it's expected to act as a, as a backstop to the city's contracts and development agreement processes, as well as to create a mechanism through which to collect taxes if the state's effort to allow statewide licenses for recreational and medicinal cannabis to, to be issued. In other words, if the state starts issuing licenses as opposed to the city, which there are bills, I think it's 1302, SB 1302 by Laura, that would, that seeks to do that, then this would give us a mechanism to collect revenue from those entities, probably essentially at a higher rate than we would charge for those who have gone through our process and obtained a development agreement and conditional use permit. So it would kind of safeguard those businesses. The other component to it is, is we know cannabis is an extremely difficult thing to criminally prosecute. It would allow us to have the mechanisms to also, another tool in our, our belt, to essentially battle on the civil side those who seek to come in here and illegally operate through the use of cannabis. In other words, if they're not paying taxes, there are similar penalties that can be assessed against them for essentially evading the city's taxes and business license requirement. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. But cannabis will be governed, at least for the ones that the city permits, largely through the development agreement process and the conditional use permit process, not through this tax.
Before I get to you, Paul, would this fall under 218?
Yeah, that's why we have to take it to the voters in terms of, yeah.
That's, okay. Paul?
So just so I'm clear, this isn't a tax on anybody that doesn't use it. It's just for the people that use it?
Correct.
So if you, operators or the people that consume it, that purchase it in the city of Atwater?
Correct. Well, and, and again, our operators would be exempted from it so long as their development agreements were in place. Meaning that if somebody came in and challenged our development agreements-
But the average citizen wouldn't be-
The average citizen should not be impacted. And if you were to use one of the businesses that's been approved by the city, one would expect to have a significantly better effective tax rate. In other words, it's about 5 or 6% as opposed to the ability to go up to 15. If this passes, the city council would have the prerogative of where to set it, set the rate. We would encourage the council to go at a higher rate since it acts as a contractual backstop than what otherwise would be allowed. Because it's really to be, you know, to deter people from operating in, in a non-licensed capacity. So in other words, this is, this is a, one tool to use to, to re, to cement local control on cannabis.
To monetize the illegal activity.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The only thing I'm, how would we sell this to the public is kind of my, my thought process on this.
I think it's, I mean, I think the challenge is, is, I mean, we will have, this council will have to write a ballot statement on behalf of it describing the purpose of it. And I do think that when you explain to folks that this would only apply to people who essentially illegally use or who are licensed by the state and are subsequently allowed to operate, or to a business whose agreement with the city is somehow invalidated by a court, that only in those very rare opportunities would this apply to them, then I think it's a way of, of doing it. Again, almost every city, irrespective of how conservative or how liberal they are, typically uses the 0 to 15 formula. That's just a max authorization. It doesn't mean that you will actually have to go that high. But again, we don't plan on using it.
So this is just a mechanism for, for, for the operation and the legalization, basically it's a mechanism of the legalization of cannabis to pay its own way?
To ensure that it's paying, that it's paying its own way, even if the state finds a way later on to-
Right.
Circumvent local licensing.
Because if we didn't do this, then the regular taxpayer in Atwater would have to flip the bill to cover all the, the additional costs and expenses. This is a mechanism to make sure that we're not being burdened by this new regulation.
If you didn't and the state offered a statewide license, then they would essentially have zero use tax. But the businesses in which you permitted would largely go out of business because they would have a higher operating cost or we'd have to renegotiate it at that point in time.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Any comments from the public? You look like you wanted to say something.
Yeah, since you brought that up, 1904 Canal. I've not been in favor of this marijuana business at all. If I understand correctly, the business, the proprietors of the businesses are not going to pay taxes? Is that what the conversation was just a minute ago? They're not paying taxes? Only, only the people that are buying are going to pay tax on the product?
No, that, so they, there's a con, the way that it's set up right now is we have a contract with the folks who would operate in town and they pay a percentage of their gross revenue. That is different than somebody who was permitted by the state, who wouldn't be, who we wouldn't have that contract with, who then you'd want to have a, a tax in, in place.
So your gross revenue that you're talking about is what, is that 1 to 15 that you're talking about?
No, it's typically set at around 5%.
About, around 5? And then you said that there isn't, there isn't going to be, that the citizen here that, that doesn't use, you know, he's not going to be impacted?
Correct.
Is that what you said?
Correct. I mean, from, from a financial perspective-
If you're not going to be, if you're not going to be impacted, don't you think that the PD would be impacted?
That's the, that's the idea.
By virtue of having, you, you got regulations to this. Your PD is going to be in- Your PD is gonna be impacted because they're the ones that are gonna have to deal with it. So you can't say that it's not gonna be impacted. And you need to make, you, you need to make room for more police officers, is that the case? You're gonna have problems, just as I said before, with people that are sitting around drinking outside of these convenience stores. You're also gonna have problems with people drink, uh, smoking all over the doggone place and giving it to kids. We already have a problem at Outwater High School, you know, with, with this issue of individuals going onto the school grounds and coming off and, and something that I relate to Paul not long ago. So this is gonna become a problem, you know, from the law enforcement side.
Well, I, I think to, to answer your question is, yes, those monies that will be taxed will be going for law enforcement. They're gonna have to cover the cost. We can't do it for profit, the tax. So PD would, by default, would grow, we'd get more officers with the, the cannabis, but we're not plugging those numbers into the budget. So we're not making any assumptions. We're trying to have some things on the books, so when this thing takes place, we have a mechanism to recoup our money. So there's no disagreement with what you're saying about.
The gentleman that was here, you know, uh, the last meeting, I believe, when this came up, meeting or two ago, he was here tonight. He left, I don't know for what reason, but he indicated, you know, that you, you're not gonna be able to compete, you know, with, uh, your black market. So I don't know, you know, I, I don't know how you're figuring out making money even at the, at the, uh, with the angle that you're using. I don't, you know, I don't know. If he'd have been here, maybe he could address it, but that's what he said.
Well, I, if I might jump in here and just.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. We're, we're talking about two different mechanisms. And Mr. White, jump in if, if I screw this up in between, but we're talking about local taxation as opposed to if the state mandates the, the use.
Or if our agreement gets invalidated by a court.
Right. So it's, it's, it's two different ends of it. Our local, our local one is in place now, correct? And this would be a stopgap, basically, if the state licensed type would come in. So this would, this would be, and it wouldn't be, as, as Mr. White had also articulated, that it would not put any money in the bank essentially, correct?
Correct.
It's.
It's not anticipated, it's not on the books for that purpose, yeah.
Right.
Yeah. One of the, one of the things that I came up here, one reason I came up here is that you, you said it won't impact the regular citizens, you know, that don't use. In the end, though, it does, because they're the ones that are gonna have to put up the numbers, you know, for the PD and everything else, everything else that goes on with it.
Understand.
Ultimately. That's all I'm saying. I don't know how the hell you're gonna figure this one out, but.
Ms. Waterman.
Um, I, Mr. Han- Hernandez, so the safety issues that you're talking about, or each individual, um, um, I was like, uh, manufacturing, whatever, they have their own agreements that, um, safety mechanism is in place. They have to have that in process and it has to be approved by our, our police as well as our council before they're approved to actually have a business. So there is a security mechanism in place in that development agreement.
So they're gonna, they're gonna have the, the, the PD's gonna have the ability to either approve it or not, huh? Is that what you're saying?
They get random inspection, right?
If you got, if you got only 22 personnel on, you know, in the department, uh, then you can't handle it, then what?
Well, so if I could, Mr. Hernandez, so just to be clear, California has already legalized, you know, recreational and, and medical marijuana. So the impacts are, are here and they have legislation on the books that would allow, that would take the licensing authority over delivery services away from the local jurisdictions and would move it to the state. What we're trying to say is, we're trying to put a mechanism in, in place where if the state starts does the lic, does the licensing, then we can collect tax revenue to be able to give police the resources that they need in order to combat the effects of it. There's no question that there are effects from it. What we need to do is have a revenue stream to enable us to deal with the effects. Otherwise, we're having to deal with the effects from the same pot that we've got now.
You're gonna go ahead and do this, probably, I would think, but the consequences of it are, it's not in the grownups, it's in the youth. It's getting reduced to it. And I don't think that's something you wanna do, because that's something that they're already dealing with at, at the high school level, even at the grade school level. I've gone to these district meetings, you know, with a high school, where some of this has been brought up. And we're, we're not a big town here, 29,000 people, and you, and you're gonna expect, you know, for the youth, that at this stage, they have this mentality of that they can do anything, and I tell you what, that's exactly what the hell is going on at the high school level. So you know what? Somewhere down this road, you're gonna have to deal with it. What I don't wanna see happen is everybody in the city of Outwater having to pay for it. That's all.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call for the question. Raymond?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
Mr. Vineyard is absent. Vera?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Motion passes. Our next item, resolution submitting a ballot measure for the general election municipal election authorizing the city, asking whether the position of Outwater City Clerk should be appointed rather than elected.
So Mayor and Council, what you have before you here is an, um, a staff recommendation to approve a ballot measure that would essentially, um, move the city clerk position to an appointed position. We're bringing this measure as, as a way of kind of proactively cutting costs in the future. Every four years, when the city clerk goes up for election, we have to pay to put that on the ballot and pay for that election to be conducted. It costs about $5 per registered voter to be able to put something on the ballot. And so on at least a going forward basis, this would, um, seek to reduce city costs and that's the thought process behind it. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Well, the only question I have is, uh, so we're, we're talking to put this one measure.
Yeah, we have another one after, but.
I'm sorry?
We have another one following, but yes.
Yeah. It's like you say, it, you know, what it costs to put it on, uh, for this one here, this would be essentially 15 grand?
I don't have the exact numbers. I just, I have the numbers per registered voter. I don't know your latest numbers.
Oh, uh, no, I'm sorry. I'm thinking total population. Okay. Corey, do you know the numbers for that?
I don't. Um, actually Gina might, because I think they were.
Know the register. How many registered voters we have?
I think the last time we had election of officers and a ballot measure, it was about $25,000 for everything. And the, um, elections office, they won't give you an estimate, so we just have to go off of what we, we think it's gonna be.
Right.
If I can clarify, Mayor.
Sure.
So that is one of the reasons, but it's not, uh, it, we also have other reasonings behind it and I think our current city, and just so it, we're, it's known as well, is this wouldn't go in effect if it was, um, until after the new term came about. But I do want to maybe give our current city clerk, uh, current, we've, in the past, I don't know how many years, but we've had, usually it's been a staff person as a city clerk. This last election was the first time we had, um, a private person, uh, take the position as the city clerk. And it's been very difficult, um, without having staff or resources available to them to do the necessary things. Uh, we tend to utilize staff, uh, to do those things that are needed to be done anyway. So what we're looking at is possibly making it, um, an appointed position and then more than likely, um, again, that would be an option that you'll be able to decide upon, but look at possibly combining that with a current staff position.
Okay, good. Cause I, I guess my whole question is the cost benefit approach to it, so.
I think the thought is that if it was to pass this time, then it would preclude you from having an election in 2020, which means that you'd, it would be net even at 2020, um, and then you'd have a cost savings kind of going forward.
All right. I had, I was elected in November of 2016. And I said, starting in about January of 2016, um, I, I am kind of a, um, I'm, I'm, my situation is unique. I own three businesses. Uh, my business is about a mile away. I get over here, I think the staff will tell you, I get over here very quickly and I'm very responsive, but we can't be thinking of everything in the here and the now. We have to think and project in the future and how it's going to be in the future. And so the next person that you would elect, I would venture to say very few people would be as available as I am to come over to help with staff issues. So, starting in January of 2017, I have said from the get-go that I personally feel that the city clerk going forward does need to be a member of the staff. However, um, not to differ with anybody, but this is my, my feeling. You're asking me my feeling, this is my feeling. I feel like it does need to be a member of the staff, however, I think it still needs to be elected. And the reason why I feel like it needs to be elected is because I don't answer to anybody on this dais. I answer to the people. And should there be any issue that comes up regarding the documents of this city that we are the caretakers of, any item that would come up that we are the caretakers of, I would not answer to anybody on the stias if I was staff. So e- even if I wa, my point is, is every member up here, there's a stipulation when you were elected, and that stipulation is that you have to be a resident of the city of Outwater. That's a stipulation to just be a council member. I think going forward, I would like to still see the city clerk position elected with the stipulation that the person is staff. Why is that? The reason why is because there is nothing corrupt, shady, nothing that can be pushed. It, it's, it's a neutral position. I think everybody sees that. I try to maintain neutrality. And so it, it maintains that neutrality and thank the good Lord for the good people that we have on the dais. But should we have somebody who is not so good, who was trying to corrupt the position, move things, do things underhanded, I could say, listen, even though I'm staff, you can't fire me. I answer to the people. And, um, so my opinion is, um, I do think it needs to be a staff member, but I would maintain that I feel personally it needs to be elected. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Mr. Raymond.
My question's for legal counsel. Uh, Mr. White, so with, with hearing what, uh, Mr. Hyler is saying, do we run into discrimination issues if you limit who can, um, run for the position by saying it's staff only? Or, I mean, because, you know, to me, an election's, election's, an election, and so I don't want to muddy that, but I do agree because you want somebody that's not appointed by the council for the reason of what he's saying, the integrity of the office.
Yes.
I think that's, that's the key element, but at the same time, if we only let people, I mean, they have to be resident in the city.
They have to be a resident of the city and just like, uh, for, you know.
You're limiting, so that's, that's where my concern is.
Yeah, and I, and I get the point too. I know I'm not legal, but I will throw it in there too that, you know, now we have districts. So to be, to serve on the council now, you have to be a resident of whatever, you know, area number three. So to me, it's, it's kind of in the same realm, um, as that. So I, I get your point, but legal would obviously have a better answer, but.
Ms. Waterman.
I, I'll, I'm sorry, I'll let Doug answer, but I did wanna address just two things. I don't think we could have an appointed and an employee, um, because you can't give staff direction. Currently, staff is the one that is responsible for the records. The, the clerk does do the execution and things, but staff is the one that files them and maintains them and has that hands-on and is responsible for the records.
And I might also point out, um, we were talking about this earlier, Fran Barrett, for those that know Fran, did this for a number of years as a staff member in elected position. And Gina did the same thing. So it's, it's, yeah. For, for, uh, having some sort of precedence, it's, it's there. It's established. So, um, it, it, it can be done. I, I would want to, in, in here, i- in the, um, resolution, it doesn't, it doesn't say that, um, specifically though. So that, there have to be some wording.
And, and that was my, my main question is, you know, Gina was elected.
Right.
But it wasn't because she was a staff member, it's because she was elected, she ran and she won.
Right, right.
So that's where I, I don't want to limit who can run, and that's why my question was for Mr. White here.
Yeah, I, I think to the city clerk's point, uh, I mean, and I think it's a, it's a good philosophy. I don't think it's one that we could legally create and it would, um, and I don't know that we, we could do it such that it would accomplish the purposes, because effectively, I mean, having somebody, uh, from, um, no offense, Brian, don't mean it that way, but that, from Public Works, um, doing city, city clerk functions, it, those, those may, those may, depending on their job duties, be somewhat incompatible with, with, you know, their strengths. Might not be, but it, but it could be. And I don't think we would have the ability to kind of dictate and say, I, I mean, effectively you'd only have a handful of employees who would even meet those qualifications. And I don't think that we could do that through.
And that was my concern, is do we get into the discrimination aspect?
Good, if, if I may jump in, um, I do not do the day-to-day functions as it is. The staff does the day-to-day functions and, and, meaning the deputies that we have are ta, they're handling the day-to-day typing out the minutes, putting together your agenda, et cetera. There will always be deputies that are doing the, the nuts and bolts work. So I, uh, not to be argumentative, but I think it, it would almost be the same as what we have now in that you could have somebody, I mean, obviously we wouldn't, but just going to your point, we could have somebody that was Public Works that could be elected as the city clerk overseeing the position. Is that gonna happen? No, probably not. But you could have that and still have deputies that are actually doing the nuts and bolts.
Mr. Creighton.
So, um, just some, for my, my purpose only, some background. There was obviously a motivating factor, so let me put this on the agenda for reading. And then we've been talking all night about cost savings and we're talking 30, $40,000 to put things on the ballot. What's, what is our goal here? It's not to do anything other than cost savings is, is what I, I'm, I'm just neutrally listening, 'cause it sounds like to me, staff's trying to say, hey, there's a potential cost savings by bringing it in-house. And, and a lot of municipalities around us, if not all, I don't know any other ones that are elected, are there, there's no downfall to this? I mean, staff was elected and staff and did all the work with the deputies, so I don't see a risk of doing it either way. Only if we keep the same way we are, we're gonna be expending money. Am I right?
So my thought process in bringing this forward was, in the previous proposal with having an outside city clerk, we were looking at having a deputy city clerk for a, um, budget of $61,000. We have a staff member who's currently doing the work. My proposal would be make her that city clerk, um, incorporate it within the job. Of course, it'll have to be negotiated and we'll have to discuss all of that process. But that is my thought process in that, is that they're already doing the work. We've had it in-house, it worked. This is the first time we've had it, um, without having a staff person. If, if a staff person doesn't run, then how are we going to have an elected clerk?
Right, and that's, is that part of the fiscal solvency and responsibility that we, we start having checks and balances and controls and with a $61,000 savings and a $30,000 election, you're almost looking at a hundred grand that you guys are saving? So you guys, obviously you're doing it for financial reason.
I will, I will speak up and say that this has nothing to do with, and I know it may sound this way, it has nothing to do with me, because I stay in the position, um, to fulfill my term. So I don't want it to sound like I want this position. I frankly could care less. I frankly could care less. Um, but, once you see how much work it is, you won't want it either. But anyways, uh, but my point is, is, um, I'm trying to think long-term. Now, the city of Merced, not that we're trying to pattern ourselves after the city of Merced, the city of Merced, um, their city, from my understanding, at least this is the way it used to be, their city manager was also served as the city clerk, and then had deputies that worked under it. My, I, I can see that, um, but I just, I, my biggest deal is, is accountability. And I, I'm all for cost savings, I really am, but I just feel like this position, and, and maybe Gina would, Gina served in it a whole lot longer than I have, so she may have some thoughts, you know, on it as well. But I feel like it's got to stay accountable to the people, and that's a big factor to me, um, in seeing it go forward. So, that's a, that's my thoughts on it.
Mr. Raymond.
Again, I agree with the accountability aspect. It's the, the most important. So here's the, um, so the city clerk position will be appointed. Would that be appointed by the council or hired by the city manager?
Mr. Creighton.
Question for legal counsel, um, or actually Gina. When you're the city clerk, aren't you bonded and other things that are, that are abnormal from the average citizen that holds you more accountable than Joe Blow working, doing-
Yeah, the code requires it to be bonded.
What's that?
The, the government code requires the city clerk and the city treasurer to be bonded.
So, is that a form of a check and balance?
It's more like an insurance certificate.
Okay.
Sure.
Thanks, Lori. Okay. Personally, I think that the city clerk should be on staff. I think that, um, being in an elected position and not having the experience or the resources puts an elected official at a disadvantage.
Okay. Cost notwithstanding. Okay, so where are we at? Mr. Raymond.
So, for the appointment of the position, again, going back to accountability, would it be like a two-thirds majority of the council, or just simple majority? Because again, you want to make sure it's some, you know, somebody that everybody can work with, because you don't want to have, you know, red team, blue team, you know, blue team's in charge, blue team appoints the clerk, the red team takes control two years later, red team gets rid of that clerk and brings on another clerk. You know, that's, you know, we want to avoid all that, and that's kind of what I'm looking at here, is I want to-
You can say it however you want.
Okay.
Can I just say one more thing?
Certainly.
With having a, a city clerk on staff, you have more stability, and you do have accountability, because you have accountability to the city council and to the city manager. And the city clerk is a profession, so you do want somebody who is knowledgeable in the area, because there is so many legal ramifications, and it really is a profession.
And a huge learning curve. It truly is, and, 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 yeah.
And it, I mean, if I could add one last thing, having a strong, um, clerk, and, I mean, you've been great, because you're, with being elected, but, um, uh, it can, that's one of the areas where you can cut down legal costs, because if somebody's done it for a really long time, they can handle most PRA requests. Um, they don't have to come through legal counsel, or at least they know when to ask questions about it. You know, there's things like that that come up all the time that, that can kind of reduce costs, and it's, and it's, if it's staff, it's already a built-in kind of system of somebody getting training, doing it regularly, staying on top of it, and having those procedures in place, and having the time during the day to be able to allocate to those things.
Mr. Raymond.
I motion to approve. The item is amended by appointment of two-thirds, uh, majority of the council.
Are there any members of the audience that would like to comment to this?
I just want to ask Don something. If, if you were, at the present time, if you had been appointed, how would being independent as you are today, would that work? You know, and, and appointed, and, and voted in by the city council and not the city manager?
On certain issues-
So you would be, you would be, you know, appointed by the city council with the, with the independence that you're, that you're talking about? Would that work?
You'd have to be a city employee.
I'd have to be a, yeah, I would, I would have to be a city employee, um, to, to-
I, here, come again.
If we go forward, going forward, I would, I, it would be required that I was a city employee.
And it's my understanding that it would be under the city manager, not under the council.
Well, under the MOU, it would, it would be that, but if he's gonna be independent, if he's gonna be independent, he won't be under you necessarily.
If it's an employee, which is what we're addressing right now.
Yeah. But if he's in a, if he, you know, he was talking about being independent earlier by being elected. He has nobody to, to be responsible to necessarily. This is what I'm, this is what I'm trying to address. If he remains independent to do what he, what he normally does at this present time, all right? After he's appointed, he has the same latitude. Would that work? I think you can circumvent the idea that the city manager has to appoint or, or has to run everybody, because this is an issue for me that's gonna come up on another issue, on another item down the road, I can tell you. This doesn't have to be, the city doesn't have to be run by one person, every position of the city doesn't have to be run by one person. And I think in this case, like the way he, he outlined it, if he's independent, even though he's a city employee, all right? I think, I think it'll work. And you, and you still do what you want to do as far as saving for electing and, and everything else. On top of all of that, with the city council appointing, you, you're gonna get a person that maybe is, is the most qualified to be there, whether it's somebody that's within the city, already employed or not. And it doesn't have nothing to do with the districts that you're going to that, that are all messed up, all right? So that's all I was, that's all I was asking, Don, you know, and if he, if he's thinking that it would work, then I don't know, how come you, you just don't appoint the man or the person with the independence that he presently has? That way, he's not responsible to anybody as it is, that he can work independently with, with, with the department. That's all I got to say on it, I don't know.
Mr. Raymond.
Uh, I just want to confirm, Mr. Hyler is elected currently and will be for the remainder of his term.
Which ends in 2020.
Yeah, 2020.
Correct.
Isn't that right?
Once it's done.
Yeah, it wouldn't be until-
Yeah, once, yeah, this coming-
In 2020.
This coming election, you're looking at not having to do that, so you could save the money instead of, you know, putting somebody up there, you know, that, that might want to run, you know, you, and you ain't gonna, who the hell are you gonna get? Somebody volunteers to run for it, what are you getting? We had a girl in Merced that ran for the, one of the districts. As a council person. Was homeless. Lived here in Atwater, I know that, that individual. Could've won. So, you know, you know, appoint it, give, give them the independence, you know, that they presently have, and, and try for the year, and if it works all right, you know, make sure you can change it. That's all. And get away from this business of having to, having to complicate everything.
Okay. Entertaining motion.
Mr. Raymond. Although-
Do we need to clarify that?
Yes, please clarify the- Your motion, please.
The way it reads right now, does it cover everything legally it needs to cover?
Yeah, it would, it would, it would take it away from being an, an elected position, and it would make it an appointed position, so.
Clarify that. Appointed, somebody walking down the street, you can appoint?
You could, I mean, you can, you can, um-
I think we're trying to focus it-
I don't think that you need that in the ballot measure. I would adopt that as a separate ordinance, I wouldn't put it in the ballot measure.
Okay. Okay. Second.
Well, I was gonna amend my motion then, just to adopt, uh-
The appointment.
This resolution was that? Yeah. Because you said we can, we can amend it later through, uh, ordinance, not, but do the ordinance.
So just to, just to clarify, if you wanted it to be done by staff, then we would do that through the, you know, as a separate ordinance, and we wouldn't do that until, as Gina pointed out.
Correct.
And just, and just to be clear, two-thirds is-
It's council approval, eh?
It's, it's council approval, either way, so.
It's a good job.
Two-thirds to council.
Either way. Okay. Any further discussion? Call for the question.
We have one. Creighton.
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Motion passes. Our next item, resolution submitting a ballot measure for the general election, municipal election, authorizing the city, asking whether the position of Atwater City Treasurer should be appointed rather than elected.
So, um, pretty much all the same logic and, um, and information applies. I know that the, um, uh, we have a longstanding history with the city treasurer here, would have noth, it would have, would do nothing to affect the, um, existing appointment. Um, it wouldn't interrupt it, that would be grandfathered in, uh, for the same logic. This would be another position that we would be able to, um, move to having it be appointed. Typically, the finance director for most cities serves in this, in, in this role. Um, there's already a check on the system, because the city council's actually in, uh, in charge of, um, approving the budget. There's no, there's no, the city treasurer doesn't actually have any kind of budgetary authority in and of themselves. They have a few specific roles and, and things that, under the code, um, they're required to do, but, um, budgets, all the things that deal with money are largely dictated by city council decisions. So, um, again, that, this role's typically filled in most cities, not by an elected position, but by a, a staff member, and it's typically the finance director. Um, and again, it's only done as a, kind of a cost savings measuring, because staff's already doing the work.
Comments from the council? Comments from the public? Yes, sir.
Terry McDaniel here, as a citizen of Atwater. I just want to get clarification. Um, we keep hearing rumors out in the, uh, community, is Jim Heller actually the longest elected official in the state of California?
Yes.
Wow. I just want to get that clarified. Don't let that weigh on your decision.
I remember his family since he was a kid, or I was a kid. Here again, he's been here this long, making, you know, me, appoint him with the same conditions of whatever there is. I, I, I don't know any reason why not. Unless he objects, then you have to get somebody else, I guess. But I'd leave him alone, just leave him do what he does until he decides to not do it? In the meantime, you change it, instead of being elected. The boys going around against him anyway. Everybody in town here knows him. Pete's sakes.
I'll make the motion on this, uh, with the stipulation that, uh, we just cut to the chase and just make the treasurer, um, position that of also the finance director.
I think the, the, the same thing we talked about earlier with the code, um, it would be an ordinance that we would adopt, and we can only do that after it passes.
Okay. And I would, uh, make the motion to, uh, adopt as, uh, recommended by staff.
I'll second.
Any other comments or questions? Yes, Mr. Creighton.
Has anybody talked to Mr. Heller? I don't see him here today.
I do.
Can you share what the discussion was? Because he is the longest-serving elected, and I don't know if you guys know him or not, but you don't want to make him mad.
Yeah, no, I made sure and approached him before we even put it on there. I had the discussion. He has no intention of running, and again, this would be the same as the other, it would run out at his term.
Because, because when I see him on the street, I don't have to go the other way.
No, and it would be after his term finishes.
Okay. Okay.
All right. Call for the question.
Oh, is there a second?
Yes.
Okay.
Vera second.
Vera?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Motion passes. City council matters. City council comments.
I want to thank everybody that was involved, again, um, dealing with the state and the audit, uh, just kind of reiterate what the interim city manager and, uh, Mr. White was saying. I want to thank Adam Gray for his involvement, and I actually had a chance to read the transcript from the, from the day, and to say that Senator Canela, uh, went to bat for us would be an understatement. He was, uh, if any of you guys watch MMA, it's like Frank Trigg versus, uh, uh, Matt Hughes. You know, Matt Hughes being choked out by Frank Trigg, then he somehow fights his way out of it, picks him up, runs him across the ring, slams him. And, uh, that's pretty much what Senator Canela did for us, is he was on his back, getting beat up, and he fought and fought and fought and fought, and was able to get us a ninety-day extension. So I just, I want to, you know, from the bottom of my heart, sincerely thank, um, Senator Canela and Assemblyman Gray. Oh, one, one second, one second, I'm not done yet. Oftentimes, uh, our little town, we, we think we get left out between, you know, with the assemblymen and the, and the senator, but, uh, this is just proof that they do care, they want to see us succeed, and, um, I thank them.
Mrs. Vera.
Yeah, I want to kind of piggyback on that. I was on the phone frequently the night before it with, with Lori, and-
I know that, kind of, the information we were getting, you know, from Sacramento area was, doesn't, it's not gonna do you any good, it's already on the consent calendar, they're not gonna take it off. And her response was, hey, I'm not going down without a fight. So I know Laquinder, same thing with you and Lori, you know, kudos to you guys. So e- even if you would've went there and we would've lost, we didn't go down without a fight. And just like I've said before, you know, it's not how hard we fall, it's how quick we get back up, and we're, we're on the road to that, I see that, and, um, you know, a lot of intern people here, but a lot of people who stepped up and are just, man, we're taking it and fighting the fight and doing the, doing the good work. So, I don't want us to take that word interim and, and take it out of anybody's, the kudos they deserve for the work they did, you know? Police chief, he didn't, he didn't really apply for that, he just, when it was bestowed upon him, just stepped up to the plate and said, I'll do it. And same thing with Laquinder, and, and same thing with, with Lori. You know, they had no idea that it was gonna come this quick, and stepped up to the plate. So, for all of you guys, for, for Brian, absolutely, for everyone who's here and, and, you know, really fighting the fight, and, um, um, you know, that's pretty much it. Also, I think it was addressed earlier, the FPPC letter, I have it here for you, if anybody needs to see it, was an exception granted, uh, January thirty-first. There was a letter provided by Tom Turpster's office to the FPPC asking for proof that, um, I did not have a, um, identity of interest. We checked on that before I ever ran, to make sure that there would be no, no, like, hitchin' or giddyup, and so I have that, it has, it was provided to Turpster's office, it's been provided to, to, um, Attorney White's office, and I do have a copy of it here, so if you'd like to see it. Thank you.
Mr. Creighton.
Um, I just want to thank everybody. It's been a, a, a long process, and it's gonna get a little more difficult, and the, the chief was tossed in the chair, and you've been doing an excellent job. I personally want to thank you on that, and Brian, and Laquinder, and, and Lori, and, Justin, and Mark, and even you too, Sandy. You guys are working hard, doing the best you can. You're helping us. Who?
Gina.
Gina also. Um, but the main focus is, you guys see what's going on here, every council meeting, you know what's going on every day, and you guys are gonna be the ones that help us get out of the mess we're in. We're, we're just, we make the final decisions of what you guys are bringing to us, and I respect that. So I want you guys to know that it's greatly appreciated. And, uh, Dan Hern- appreciated. And Dan Hernandez, your comments tonight, you know, I, I respect that. And when I see you on the street, I'm still gonna talk to you and not avoid you. But, you know, you're just doing what you gotta do, and I respect that. And the rest of the council, very good meeting. Thank you.
We wanna talk about the nineteenth and the cleanup day, with the exception of the junk I brought over there. Just a couple of things. It was a very successful day. That was one thing that was conveyed. One thing that they fell short on was having enough transportation for old mattresses. And I found that out when I had to go and take the two I had. Right on back where I got them, so. But that, that was, I think, one of the shortcomings, if there was. And also, the hazardous waste materials. I think we need to, you know, look into that for next time also, because I had a bunch of that too, and had to haul it back home. So, but all in all, though, there was, there was lines going in. Everybody was being taken care of. The Republic guys were doing a great job, along with our city staff folks, Brian, and all the guys that were out there. It was a good day. So I'm, I'm grateful that this came off after getting into an ugly start, but it, it worked out well. As we all know, the weather is rapidly changed, and it's gonna be hot from now on, I'm sure. So one of the things that we seem to forget, but it's still in effect, is our watering days. So we need to consider, you know, what we're doing with that. So let's remember, please, let's, let's watch all of our water and, you know, watering our lawns and things along those lines. Make sure that you're on the right day and right times, okay? Lastly, I want to adjourn the meeting tonight, and I fell short the last one, but we lost one of the Atwater family here, Frank Raponte, who worked for the city. Frank worked for the City of Atwater for ten years in the Parks and Recreation Department. He coached and officiated football, basketball, softball, volleyball, and judo. He was a very proud World War II, Korea, and Vietnam veteran. If you've been to his home on Nutmeg, you would've seen a prominent flag pole with the American flag flying each and every day. He was a native Hawaiian who lived the Ohana spirit every day of his life. Ohana means families are bound together and must cooperate and remember each other. Very happy to remember Frank and adjourn this meeting in his memory. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, for coming out tonight. Thank you for those that are watching at home. God bless you all, and drive safely home. This meeting is adjourned.
Can I, can I just ask, can I just ask who went to the district high...